Now that we have all the city council members here, we will begin the City of West Sacramento Special Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment, Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority for the October 20th Special Meeting. And we will meet via Zoom pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 until further notice to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in meetings via teleconference. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via livestream or via wave cable channel, and the instructions are on the city's website. We will begin with presentations by the public on Item 1, on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. The council is prohibited from discussing issues on the agenda brought to them at this time according to state law. Items must be first noticed on the agenda before any discussion or action. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak at this moment?
There is one, Maria Garavol.
Okay, and just to add that these items are not related to item, sorry, the 7:00 PM meeting. This is a special meeting for the swearing-in of Dr. Early for her as a council member. So I just want to add that there will be another public comment period at 7:00 PM in case Maria Garavol would like to wait until then. But go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to welcome the new city council member, and I was over there and dropped off some books for everyone. And so I'd like to welcome the new city council member, and I'm sorry that we, the public, does not have the opportunity to attend. I see that you're outside the city council. And so anyway, thank you for being on live.
Thank you. Next is item number two, under City Manager, is consideration of Resolution 21-78, accepting the official canvas and certification of September 14, 2021, special election, and declaring elected Dr. Dante Early as a member of the city council. And we have Amanda Berlin or the city manager who will present briefly on this.
Sorry about that, Madam Mayor. Not much of a presentation to give here other than this is the official action the council will take to certify the election. There's a resolution attached to the report, so it's really as simple as that. This certification was done by the Yola Elections Official, Jesse Salinas, and this is the necessary step to make the results official. So thank you.
I'll ask the motion to approve this item.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to certify.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Member Alcala seconds, and we'll ask the clerk to please call the roll for this item.
Councilmember Alcala. Mayor Portemla Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
She cannot vote until after.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. All right, next, we will begin item number three. The city manager will help coordinate the swearing-in of our newly-elected city council member, Dr. Dante Early.
Good evening again.
Yeah, sorry, Kathy. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our council member and her parents to conduct the swearing-in. Perhaps we can do quick introductions and go ahead with those. Thank you.
Yes, these are my parents. This is Dan Early, this is Tara Early, my mom and my dad, which I know if you are following my campaign, you know that they were walking, campaigning, and they even wrote a letter for West Sacramento about why to vote for me. Thank you so much for your vote, for your support, and they are now going to swear me in.
Do you want to raise your right hand? I, Dante Early, solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
I, Dante Early, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true allegiance to...
I'm sorry.
He's got it memorized because he had to do it for so many years.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of station.
Or purpose of station.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discard.
And faithfully discard.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter. Do you hear that?
Girl pal.
Am I bissled? Thank you guys so much. So is now the time I say something, Madam Mayor, or do we have the city council pass?
At this moment, we will have city council members have the opportunity to speak, and they will speak in front of your camera there. And we'll have all city council members, I guess. I can go first. Let me turn this off. Yes, I'm going to be very brief. Councilmember Early, welcome. Congratulations on your race. I know by your extensive background will be a welcomed and very critical part of the decision-making here in West Sacramento. Welcome again. Thank you. There you go. All right. Dr. Early, we are very proud to have you on city council and excited to work with you. We know you are going to do an incredible job to serve the community because you have demonstrated that in all the work you've been working on the city, including the beautiful Girl Scouts that are here today.
This is my troop. Thank you for having me. Can you ladies say hi? I love it.
It's an incredible opportunity to be able to serve with you. It's an honor, and I'm really looking forward to this. Thank you so much. Congratulations, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. I love it. I love how excited you girls are. Now we have to, now we have to make sure we get back for councilmember. Girl, say hi. Hi. Hi, how you doing? All right. Today we stand together to witness several moments where we've made history. The swearing-in of West Sacramento's first council member to win during a special election. The very first African-American city council member, male or female. And the very first time the West Sac City Council has been 80% female. When I think of what it means to be a great leader, I envision a person with integrity and a person with humility. Someone who leads with authenticity in a lens that recognizes the complex issues that we face as a community and is tested in her ability to respond. An accomplished professional, an active community servant and city commissioner, a working mother of two, and the new president and CEO of the United Way, who chose to step forward and service as a city council member and our proud little community. Today is indeed a good day for the people. To Quinn. Quinn, today you get to see mommy be a great cheer in yet another way. Watch closely as what she's going to do is going to be compelling. But know that what she's doing, she is doing for you. She's doing it for your Girl Scout troop. She's doing it for the students in your school and their parents and for all of us. She doesn't have to. She chooses to. In order to show the world what it looks like to be a hard-working CEO, mother, city council member, and a person who can pave the pathway for so many behind her, who will someday occupy this very space, perhaps maybe even you, or my son Mateo, who claimed his spot in the city council chambers back in 2016. To Dante's parents, Dan and Tara Early. AKA Beyonce's mom to me. You must be so darn proud. It's been an honor to see your investment, the investment you began three decades ago to make this fine human being, and it's been an honor to walk with you and our community and to speak with everyone and stand shoulder to shoulder in support of councilmember Early. I love saying that, councilmember Early. I love hearing. You've done a phenomenal job. Thank you. To Dante's husband, Norm. All I got to say is brace yourself. The thing is, they just got a puppy recently, too. I don't know what they're thinking, but it's crazy. Congratulations and to Dante. It's an honor to be here, standing in front of everyone who is supporting you. All I got to say is I knew that when you posted the fifth highest vote total in council history, that your engagement to the community and your experience was widely respected and unshakable. So I knew already what the spectral election result would be and how it would turn out. And it was no surprise when you tripled your percent of the vote and garnered almost the identical margin of victory as you did in 2020. So while I'd wish that we would have been council college sooner, I celebrate that you're here now with everyone in support, and I look forward to a future collaboration that addresses West Sac challenges while continuing its success. And so with all that, ladies and gentlemen, I have the great honor and privilege to stand alongside now councilmember Dante Early West and celebrate her many accomplishments while at the same time looking forward to the future, knowing that the best is yet to come. Congratulations.
I'm going to get my say here as well. First of all, congratulations. And to the residents of West Sacramento, thank you for putting your trust into Dr. Dante Early West, councilmember, Dr. Dante Early West. Congratulations. You know, this city has such a rich history and leadership. I'd be remiss if we didn't take a moment to thank one of our founding fathers who's here, our first mayor, Mike McGowan.
Thank you for being here, Mike. It is, you think about the arc of our history in West Sacramento, starting from such humble beginning of a city that incorporated in 1987, people who saw a vision for West Sacramento, who saw a vision for leadership and to become the envy of the region. We never foresaw getting this far. We never foresaw having a city with such a bright future. And certainly, today is another milestone as we welcome in our first African-American council member to these council chambers. It is a truly historic mark, another arc in leadership. That is what we are in West Sacramento. I'm so proud to be serving with you from here on out. And I just really want to congratulate you and your family. We'll let them know we are all in this together as the family, as council members. I learned a long time ago that we all work together. West Sac is best when we all work together. And to the families that comes to you as well. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you so much. Coming on? What do you say?
No, no.
Me? It's my turn. I'm going to keep it, I'm going to keep it short. You know, this really was such a community effort. From the very beginning in 2020, we just continued to gain momentum around what I stand for and what our city stands for, which is a diverse community coming together for all voices to be represented at the table, for all of us to be heard, for our city. I am so excited to have all of you here. You all are what made this happen. This really was this community coming together, all the way from my Girl Scouts who also campaigned and walked, to the moms at Elkhorn, to my fellow council members who also walk for me. I cannot say enough how much I appreciate you. To my husband, who was here helping with our family holding it down at home. And of course, to my parents, who were walking in the cold, in the rain, and in the summer heat. Sometimes my dad would come all the way from work in his business suit and take off his jacket and just go door-to-door with me. That's the kind of campaign we had, and that is the kind of service that I want to be for you. I am so happy and proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We are now going to adjourn the meeting. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll request a second.
Second.
We'll get a second. Councilmember Orozco, seconds. Madam Clerk, please hold the roll.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Portemla Desma.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Early. Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. And we will reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Yay!
She's here? Oh, there she is. Okay, great. Okay, now that all the council members are in, it's an exciting new evening here today. Now that we have a full council, we will commence the West Sacramento City Council and the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment, Successor Agency, and the West Sacramento Financing Authority October 20th meeting. And next, we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Raul Deanda is on the line. Are you able to press star nine so that you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Deanda?
Hi, Laura. This is Aaron. I noticed Mr. Deanda is in attendees. He could be moved over, perhaps.
Okay, Mr. Deanda, you are now ready to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Deanda. If you can hold on for a second. We are going, with council's permission, move up the item number 10 to present the proclamation honoring you for the 30 years plus of service on the Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control District Board. And I just wanted to recognize you. We'll take a vote when we bring up the consent agenda, but we do want to recognize you and send you a proclamation expressing our city council's appreciation for your dedication on the Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control Board. Whereas the board exists to protect area residents from the serious public health threat posed by vector-borne illnesses, including the West Nile virus, Lyme disease, and yellow fever. Whereas Raul Deanda was appointed by the West Sacramento City Council to the district board in 1991 and dedicated his time as a trustee to the mission of controlling mosquitoes and other vectors to prevent mosquito-borne diseases and promote quality of life for the residents of Sacramento, Sacramento Yola County. And whereas Mr. Deanda was elected as president of the trustees of the Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control District in 1997 and 2004, he was elected and served as vice president of the board in 1996 and 2003, and secretary of the board in 1995 and 2002. Whereas Raul Deanda was always well-prepared and rarely missed a meeting, voicing strong opinions on a number of matters to help further his advocacy for public health. And whereas, while unwavering in the strong support for public health measures, supporting our region, Raul Deanda still greeted staff during board meetings with a smile on his face and was known for his humor, thoughtfulness, and love for Sacramento Kings basketball. And whereas Mr. Deanda also served admirably on the Oversight Board of the Successor Agency to the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, helping facilitate the orderly reorganization in the city's highly-successful community investment efforts. And whereas Raul Deanda has relinquished the position of trustee in Sacramento Yola Mosquito and Vector Control District as of August 18, 2021, after 30-plus years of dedicated service, now therefore be it proclaimed by the West Sacramento City Council that Raul Deanda be recognized for his many valuable contributions, years of exemplary public service, and dedication to public health. And I wanted to invite my fellow city council members just to say a few words. Mayor Portemla Desma.
Thank you. I know I am between, hey, hi, Merle. I know I'm between you and the Kings game. That's starting, I think, right? Good to hear your voice. And I just wanted to say a hearty thank you for all your service. You know, the mosquito vector control is one of those little agencies that's not well-known, but it was an important one. And the city has been so lucky to have you manning that ship on our behalf over the past number of years, 30 years. I know you provided valuable leadership there and for our city and an important public agency that provides, as we're learning now, you know, a way to mitigate the risk of mosquitoes in our area. So this has been a hugely important agency. So glad that you're at the helm of it. I also want to thank you for your time. We served together on the Oversight Board for Successor Agencies and Redevelopment Agencies. And just want to thank you personally. You served as vice chair, as a chair, and I just really appreciate your leadership along with me navigating some really complex, complicated issues that were at our hand back in 2011 and '12 and from there. But it was great working with you. I just really want to say thank you, Merle, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Portemla Desma.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alcala.
Mr. Deanda, thank you so much for all your, I'm sorry, for all your service. 30 years worth. That's a long time. And it's individuals like you, you know, that keep our community safe. I want to thank you, you know, on behalf of my family and many of the people in this community for your incredible service. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Raul, really, Anita Rodick once said, if you think you're too small to have an impact, try going to bed with a mosquito. And luckily for us in West Sacramento, we had Raul Deanda at the helm, making decisions to help keep us safe. I have a few words for you, sir. One, coming from a friend of yours, retired sheriff at Big Ed Prieto, and he says, 25 years ago, I had the pleasure of meeting Raul Deanda. While I was campaigning for Yola County Sheriff, it was brought to my attention that I should meet with Raul, who was considered the unofficial mayor of West Sac. After meeting him, we developed an instant bond and lifelong friendship as we shared similar values surrounding family. When I think of integrity, honesty, loyalty, perseverance, and respect, Raul is one of the first to come to mind. I've always admired how calm, witty, and kind he is, not only to me, but to every individual he interacts with. The mere fact that he served as the West Sacramento, served the West Sacramento community for the last 30 years clearly demonstrates his dedication to creating a better tomorrow. We also share a similar sense of humor. So I feel obligated to say in closing that those of us who know Raul have experienced what a wonderful conversationalist he is. Respectfully, retired sheriff Big Ed. Now, he referenced you as the unofficial mayor, but we actually have words from our first official mayor, former mayor Mike McGowan. And Mike McGowan said he was on the city council and believes that he was actually the person who helped appoint you to the Mosquito and Vector Control Board. He said, you've done a fantastic job over the last 30 years. And he says, he's known you since he was a kid, and he looked up to you as a pillar of the community, as someone that you needed to know and wanted to know, and someone you'd want to listen to. And as you moved through maturity and took on more responsibility in the community, that you were the one who would always give guidance. He says, Raul has always had a North Star that was guiding him to be doing things for the best interest of West Sacramento. And Mike McGowan said that he's always tried to emulate that same approach through his career. He says, Raul Deanda is someone that you just want to emulate. And at the end of this, I'll just say that it was Mike McGowan who told me that I had to meet you back in 2016, and I still remember the very first meeting and all of the history and stories that you had that spanned the history of this great city, both before and after incorporation. Raul, it's going to be very, very hard to fill your shoes. And like the public servants, including my predecessor, Mr. Brill Kristoff, who also gave three decades of his life to this city, you will be greatly missed. So congratulations for all that you've done, all that you've contributed, and all that you'll continue to do. It has been a great, great honor to serve with you, sir. Best wishes.
Councilmember Early.
Raul Deanda, Mr. Deanda, we have not met, but oh my gosh, 30 years of service, serving on our mission. I know the dedication that that takes and the time away from your family for the service of our community. And so on behalf of me and my family and the community, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmembers. And Mr. Deanda, I am so grateful for the time we have spent together. You know, getting to know you has definitely been an honor and a privilege. One of the Deandas who's been sharing an incredible legacy of tireless service and dedication to improving the lives and keeping up the health of our community, being vigilant, watching over in an area where, you know, we are feeling threatened and fearful of getting, you know, mosquito bite. But the Mosquito and Vector Control Board that you served in helped provide us with the guidance and helped educate us on what we need to do to stay safe. And on top of that, all of the other areas where you served and all of the people that have admired and respected your presence, your dedication, your knowledge, and shared it with everybody to make sure that we can carry that torch to others. And so you leave behind a legacy, Mr. Deanda, of some incredible work that you've left behind for us to continue to carry forward. You will always be in our hearts and our minds, and we look forward to making sure that we make you proud of what we do in service for our community. So, you know, it's not goodbye. We'll be seeing you around in the community. You're an active person. I always see you, you know, checking in here and there. And let's, you know, continue to stay in touch. And thank you so much. We applaud you for your dedicated service. If we can all be here to stand up and applaud and respect all your hard work, that's what we would do right now, give you a standing ovation. So thank you, Mr. Deanda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, I think we will make sure that you receive a copy of this. And, Mr. Laurel, are there any other things that you would like for us to add?
Well, I would like to thank the opportunity, the opportunity that you gave me to serve because I think when I went on the board, it was a very poorly managed district. But when I left, I would have to say it's one of the best districts, mosquito and vector control districts in the nation. And I like to feel I had something to do to help attain that accomplishment. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deanda. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate all the nice things that were said.
I'm so glad. Thank you. Okay, we will now continue with the city council meeting. And pursuant to the governor's executive order N dash two-nine dash two O, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We have live public comment and we will continue to receive written comments and all comments received by six P M will be provided to the city council and posted on the website. To provide a live comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom meeting hyperlink or the phone number listed on the city's website. I'll request public comment during item one A and prior to the first item on consent and after the staff presentation. And comments among city council members. For any other item on the agenda. Once I've announced the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you are joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you're joining the meeting by phone, press star nine when it is your turn to comment. The clerk will call you by name or the phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. The clerk will notify you when you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes of public comment has ended, you will be muted again. You may also join by phone dialing one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. ID number nine two zero nine five six four two nine three five, password zero zero four two six four. We did not meet in closed session today, so there is no report. Next item is on the agenda is item one A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. We do have item fourteen on the agenda as well, where public comment may be made. And councilmembers are prohibited from discussing on any matter during item one A. If it's not in the, in item fourteen, we can respond if there's any items referenced there. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment requests?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. We have Laura Sheridan.
Okay. Ms. Sheridan.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Yes, my name is Laura Sheridan. I hope you're all doing well today. So my comment is about equity and access accommodation, basically. So I noticed some things the other day, and I just thought I'd present this idea to you all for consideration. So first, just to give you an idea where this is coming from, back in August, I started a faculty equity education program at a junior college and. These trainings have really helped me to change my perspective and look at my assumptions, but. Really been eye opening, and I'm thankful for that. So. With this in mind, I, I was simply crossing Jefferson Boulevard in the crosswalk at Lake Washington. When I noticed a small speaker box atop the pedestrian signal, then I wonder if that's what's supposed to emit, like that chirping sound for those who need. That auditory signal, especially with the schools being so close there. But they were silent, and it reminded me that I was, I was, you know, I've watched these live Zooms. Obviously, I'm here right now and. Reported past council meetings and commission hearings. And I didn't really, I didn't see an option embedded for closed captioning in the, in the, like the, the recorded versions, and I'm not seeing one now. And so I learned recently, in this college program, I was recording a practice lecture. Using Zoom, and I discovered that Zoom has a live, if not perfect, captioning option. It's not. I think their disclaimer is it's not technically accommodation. But I thought it might be a step in the right direction, you know, a step forward equity of access to these government proceedings if we can have. Some sort of captioning for those who might be visually or hearing impaired. Just might be helpful. And I was just wondering if that might be possible moving forward. Obviously, backward would be great, too. But moving forward, if someone could look into that, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests?
We have a spot, Rafferty.
Okay, Mr. Rafferty.
Good evening. I, I think all of us want to congratulate Dr. Early on, on her election. But we also hope that this is the last at-large election in the history of the city of West Sacramento. It's been over three years since your constituents asked you. To look at complying with the California Voting Rights Act. And you've met again and again and again, but always in closed session. As of a year ago, your attorney had billed two hundred and thirty-eight hours. And we don't know how many since. You hired an expert, and he had to tell you dictated to a preeminent expert. How to do the study in a way that he had to tell you was basically inappropriate. Practically guaranteed that you wouldn't find statistically significant polarization. And would arouse suspicions that the case was being biased. So we all know that different parts of the city have different needs. They deserve their own dedicated voices. This is good for neighborhoods and, and voters of all races. It's not about you. The incumbents or candidates. It's about bringing democracy closer to the people. So I hope that you will be more transparent in disclosing to your constituents. What you have done and what experts have told you, which we all know intuitively. Different parts of the city have different needs and vote differently. That's why district elections are the norm throughout our country, even now in California. And it's time to bring West Sacramento into the fold. So thank you very much, and I hope you will be acting on this soon.
Next, we have Dr. Brett Miller.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight, and I also.
We can't hear you. Mr. Miller.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I greatly appreciate the chance to speak for you this evening and also appreciate your dedication to our community and your public service in office. I did submit a letter to the county clerk outlining my concerns, and I hope that you are in receipt of that letter. If you are not in receipt of it, please let me know and I can resend it. I'm commenting in the letter and tonight as a citizen in Bridgeway Lakes, which is down in Southport. I'm growing increasingly concerned regarding the condition of our roads, particularly industrial Boulevard. Harbor, parts of Harbor Boulevard, south of the freeway. Jefferson Boulevard, and most importantly, Southport, Southport Boulevard. Southport Boulevard, with the recent increases in speed limit, is really taking quite a beating from the traffic. The road has curves in it, which is harder for roads to endure, and also the amount of semis, big rigs, heavy vehicles on that road have exponentially increased in recent years. Especially with the addition of the Amazon Distribution Warehouse. And that road is becoming dangerous due to the fact that tar seals on the road that have been used to patch it are now failing and water is getting underneath. The road, not only from irrigation, but also now from the rain pending. And while I appreciate the efforts of the city to patch holes on the road, which they were doing last week, those patches are fleeting. And insufficient. The patches actually are already starting to be torn up out of the road, the ones that were just put in there last week. Cars easily lose traction on the road due to high speeds and uneven surfaces. And I'm growing concerned for driver safety there. I do recognize that there are priorities in maintaining West Sacramento's roads. However, I have an overarching concern that we as citizens do not. Seem to have easy access to whatever the city's maintenance plan is. I've looked on the website extensively and have not been able to find any kind of plan indicating how, when, or where. Roads will be maintained in our city. And while I appreciate roads like West Capital being completely repaved. I do believe that there is an imminent and immediate need for road maintenance in the southern part of the city. And I greatly appreciate your consideration of this matter. I would like to ask that the council consider agendizing. The topic of comprehensive road maintenance in the city and what is the city's plan? To do that, and how do we as citizens have access to that plan? I think that will be something that I would like to hear from the city manager on as a citizen. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other requests to speak?
Maria Ghorhava.
Okay. Maria.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Madam Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am most grateful. I actually wanted to also thank Raul Deanda because I happen to have a little pool. In the front, and every year punctually, the mosquito vector control folks come over and bring these little fish to my pond. And, and so I am thankful for his service also. I wanted to comment again, I had at five thirty. That I was, wanted to welcome Dr. Early as a council member. And it's really obvious from her demeanor that she has really, really good energy about her. And I really welcome her to the council. I just can't express that enough. As everybody knows, the most important thing to me is the single member districts issue. It's been an issue for quite some time because. Well, because it's just. Proper voting and, and the, I think we have voter apathy. Because we have at-large elections in the north, we have a lot of voter apathy. And I, I think that once this issue is taken care of, that people are going to participate more and we won't have the gentrification. That we've been having for some time. And so, so welcome a doctor early, and we're going to be addressing this C V R A issue. Now that we have a full council. And lastly, on my profile picture, I put a picture of the, of Councilman Orozco. When she was speaking to the three kids, telling them that they couldn't have their signs. And last, at the last meeting, Councilman Member Orozco indicated that she had not told the kids. They could not have their pool sign up. And so, so here is this picture for yourself to see. And, and so these are the kids. We actually only have one of them there. But there is the council member after she denied not having told them that. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Next, we have Patrick Gill.
Patrick, are you ready to speak? We can't hear you.
Yeah, thank you for calling on me. I apologize because my hand was lowered by my young son playing my tablet while I listened.
Do, do you, are you asking to speak at this point?
No, I, my hand was raised by accident. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any other requests to speak?
No other requests.
All right, next is item one B, council communications from our assignments. Are there any updates from councilmembers? Councilmember Alcala.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor. I also have my grandchildren in the other room, so I apologize to everyone in advance if they get loud. I attended the Regional Water Authority twentieth anniversary celebration on October seventh. And the Regional Water Authority was created to bring a unified approach to regional water issues in the Sacramento region. So this year, the local water providers, policymakers, and water industry leaders gathered to celebrate two decades of collaboration. The keynote speaker was Wade Crawford. He is Secretary of the California Natural Resources Agency. And he spoke of the challenges of the current climate realities. Climate change is expected to alter the region's water storage, the delivery system, which will require innovative methods. For managing, capturing, and storing our water. R W A has, they've actually secured about a hundred million in grants that support increased. Water supply reliability for our region. And they are also the award-winning Water Use Efficiency Program leaders. So it was, it was a very interesting. Celebration, and we had opportunities to actually talk with people throughout the region. About water concerns and climate change. It was very, very informative. And if anyone wants more information, the Regional Water Authority actually has a website, and I encourage people to read up more on it. Also, I, along with Hill County Supervisor Gary Sandy, want to invite my fellow council members, state staff. And members of the public to a Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead event. On October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, at Bright Park from ten to two P M. This will be a fun, filled family and community event, celebrating a beautiful and time-honored Latino cultural event of remembrance and reverence. To our departed loved ones. There will be free street tacos and corn. There will be drinks, games, raffles, entertainment, and a vaccine clinic onsite. Our community is also invited to bring photos of their beloved departed place on a community altar, which will be blessed with copal incense. We'll have face painting, mask making, and performances by our River City High School Soldada, which is a Mexican dance group. We'll also have Aztec dancers, as well as a fashion show by internationally renowned fashion designer Ori Castile. Who will be debuting his Day of the Dead Katrina creations modeled by the queen and princesses of the Fiesta Patria. Our River City Asian Club will also be participating with their traditional customs honoring their beloved departed. There will be free pony rides, and we're providing Mexican photo opportunities. There will be a costume contest for adults and children. And they said, well, this is Halloween costume. I said, no, think more in terms of like Coco. And finally, we will also have Dia de Oro, which is giving away new prom and evening and wedding dresses. As well as other West Sacramento community clubs and organizations onsite with treats for all. And I just wanted to say one more thing. I. I know we're not supposed to comment, but I do believe the hearing caption is really necessary. My husband Carlos lost his hearing about two years ago, and he has a really difficult time. So if we can get, you know. Captioning, that would really, really be helpful, I think, for a lot of folks. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Alcala. Councilmember Orozco, I lost you. I can't see you.
That's odd. I'm here. Okay.
Many files here, sorry.
No, no problem. All right. On October seventh, twenty twenty-one, the Executive Commission to Address Homelessness met and had a very long but rich meeting. We, we entertained an H pack update by Bill Pride and staff presentations. About the commission's role in addressing homelessness and our Yolo County plan to address homelessness as a multi municipality group. We have electives from all around, including representatives from Davis, winters, Woodland, West Sacramento. We talk about a variety of different approaches about how we address homelessness. This particular meeting was focused on not only our bylaws and our role, but also a presentation. From the West Sacramento Downtown Streets Team, which was amazing. Our representative, Rachel Davidson, did provide over an hour's worth of presentation. About how other jurisdictions within Yolo County who desire to get the downtown streets a model in their cities can do so. And it was refreshing to see West Sacramento again being a model in this area. They have also invited West Sacramento to give a presentation about the programs that we have here, and that includes. Anything from our permanent supportive housing development, which will be up and running very shortly. Project Room Key, Project Home Key, and Downtown Streets Team. But even in addition to that, programs such as VIA, which really do stress. Equity and provide opportunities for, for all to access public transportation in the way that they otherwise could not have previously. In addition, I took a tour of Cresco Labs on October eleventh, which is one of our inner cannabis. which is one of our inner cannabis distribution facilities and got a great background on some of the local operations we have in West Sacramento. Further, on October 12th, attended the Chamber, West Chamber of Commerce's Economic and Government Affairs Forum, where we talked about and received presentations from our very own staff member Katie Yancy about the implementation of the Bank of the Tech fees and conservation of fever forms, some of which was related to our previous meeting, our most recent meeting. And I appreciated the comments that those of our chamber members provided. Um, I thought they were very informative and it really is wonderful that the chamber is doing such a great job in connecting what we're doing here at the city with the folks who need to receive this information. And with that, that's it. That's my report. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Orozco. And on October 11th, I've had a meeting with our Sacramento Valley Division, League of Cities Board of Directors. And we met to discuss future planning of Sacramento region. We took a look at past legislation that has been approved and also taking a look at future events and planning for assignments for who can be appointed for various board, League of Cities Board and committee assignments. Sacramento Valley Division will have a City PAC event, October 23rd, between 1 and 5. And I'll send the flyer over to Lori Ledesma, in case you are interested in attending. And just for a little more background, among the city council members, the League of City has these committee assignments. And these assignments are giving us the opportunity to weigh in on important issues that could impact us at the state level. And so it gives us an opportunity to weigh in on, say, for example, transportation, legislation or funding. Um, the policy committees are, includes community services, environmental quality, governance, transparency, and labor, housing, community and economic development, public safety, revenue and taxation, transportation, communications, and public works. And I've been appointed to the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works for a couple of years now. And it's just a very good opportunity for me to learn about what's going on at the state level, impacting us at the local level. And I'll forward to Lori to share with you if you'd like to apply to participate in any of these policy committee assignments, so that you can be directly involved. And it does, the meetings do meet during the workday most of the time. But it's just an additional assignment that if you would like to take on as a volunteer effort on your part. And I know Councilmember Orozco is with the Women's Caucus here with the League of Cities. So she's taken on that as a volunteer. These are just additional things that we do outside of everything else that we're doing on city council. With that, I think we don't have any other committee reports and I'll move on to item 1C. Mayor, oh, you're going to come to Desma. Okay.
Thank you. Yes, I have a few.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I have a few because I, first of all, thanks for the, my colleagues who covered on the last meeting, with the absent last meeting. But I, so I have a couple of meetings to catch up everyone on, particularly on Yolo Bus. There's some significant updates. First of all, we had a special meeting back on the September 20th, which was a special meeting, which where we agreed to with Unitran to provide, help them provide, there's a, there's a driver shortage on their end. We were helping to pick up some routes. That was an agreement in principle and move forward on helping them with route as they were continuing for bus drivers. So again, just an update on that. And as well as some background on just in general, YCTD is also dealing with driver shortages that we've learned about over the past 30 days. It's affecting some routes and some implementation of some of the Yellow Go comprehensive route changes. It's delaying those until we can get into a better situation, which the board is now working on. So that was the subject of our special board meeting back on the 20th. We met again just last week on the 11th. It was a pretty full agenda, but West Act was in the middle of it because we have, we did hear, have a public hearing on the Yellow Go Phase 2, which for us eliminated or essentially consolidated through route, commuter route into the new Route 37. I want to first, on this, it's important to note, there was, there was a lot of good outreach by the city and by YCTD to the community through social media and other venues. And we had some good feedback from the community. I think at the last meeting I was asked back in September, I mentioned that, that we started to get some feedback. We held off the public hearing for a time so that our new executive director, Yolo Bus, Autumn Bernstein, could meet with our staff. She just started at the beginning of September, walked into a little bit of hornet's nest as we dealt with some issues. But one of the issues we were able to quickly, and thanks to the staff, Jason and Sarah, who in our, in our Transportation Department here, worked with them on some of the feedback we received. So to the residents who, in our city and regular riders, really provided some really valuable feedback on the proposed Route 37 to the point that we were able to make a change for the better, I believe. So rather than going up Jefferson, the commuter route where riders, I think somebody on the public comment earlier in March discussed the travails of crossing Jefferson Boulevard, it would have required bus riders to cross Jefferson, which is not the safest pedestrian corridor. So we decided to move the route which we better, going north, going left on Stone than backup park, so that we could have better routes and a safer environment. I think it was, it was a change for the better. So thanks to our staff for helping gather the feedback and to the YCTD staff working together on that route change. It was approved unanimously by the board. Also, again, one of the things that came up, which is important, which you might want to hear about, and I spoke about a couple of months ago, was the I-80 corridor improvement. So YCTD for the past few years has been working with Caltrans as the sponsor to apply for federal grants, the infra grant, to make improvements along the I-80 corridor, basically from Solano County through West Sacramento, which is, as you know, anytime on a Saturday or on a weekday, the backup going eastbound on, on the freeway and through West Act is pretty tight as people try to cross the causeway. Similarly, more so coming westbound, I'm sorry, eastbound, coming from Solano County, of what the causeway can be a nightmare. And Caltrans has prioritized, prioritized it, we prioritized it. We're looking at implementing a managed lane. We got an 80-something million dollar grant approved from the federal government. And so the implementation began. And they had a presentation for us, an update, back on the 11th last week. Then subsequently, myself and the chair supervisor, Sailor, have been meeting with YCTD. There's some, there will be more outreach around this. But it is overall a good thing. We can get some improvement for managed lane to help traffic come smoother. We're trying to make sure we define managed lane so that it gets the most out of that lane, whether it's for transit or whether it's for H O V or, or other uses. And making sure it's a comprehensive approach, at least to start with. It will include some improvement to the freeway as it crosses into West Sacramento that I know our city staff has got that now, including flyovers that help to, help untangle the eastbound traffic coming in from the causeway, going to continue on eastbound 80 north over the bridge. So this is one that we're, I'm asking the city manager and staff, I've already talked to them. They're very engaged on now. We need to be engaged as plans get finalized because this will impact West Sacramentoans and, most importantly, our kids movement through getting trucks out through that area. So I know the city manager met with the team as well. So thanks to the city staff for jumping on that as well. So that's all I have from YCTD. There were some, again, some other business, but those are the ones most prevalent to us. Also, on September 20th, and going back a little bit, was a meeting of the Yellow Habitat Conservancy. Just a lot of ministerial work, public hearings around providing an agreement with PG&E on some permit coverages we have in those areas that they need in, in, in Yolo County. And then some work we need to do about the, with the Valley elderberry longhorn beetle mitigation plan. This is all really super interesting stuff, I know. But the Yellow Conservancy is continuing its good work in those areas. So again, things are going well there. And then finally, on October 7th, was a meeting of the State Talk Transportation Committee. There's only one item actually I voted on, which was the Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program, which we've seen a few times before. And then continuing discussion around the Next Gen Transit Strategy and then the MTP Sustainable Community Strategy, which is really important to us. Again, those are areas where we have found, we're in alignment with, with our, all our work in transit through VIA, through all the other modes that we are building in our areas. So again, the one that we keep our, is around the Next Gen Transit Strategy as SECOG, which encompasses the entire region, as far up as north as Marysville and near the city and up to Lincoln. It's a very, very broad base of, of interest there. And I think the area that we're, as we continue to work on things like climate change, better enhance transit, to support our goals around climate change, keeping that a priority on how we move people around the inner city. Things like our streetcar light rail project, what we're continuing to work on, things like VIA and remote. Those are important to kind of keep front and center. And so anyway, just want to make sure that people are aware that that dynamic is continuing to go on. So that's all I have for today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protemla Desmond. Thank you for covering all those boards, committees that you participate in and everybody that else that does that as well. Very informative updates that you provide. One other update I forgot to include is the U.S. Conference of Mayors meets on a regular basis. And they are providing regular updates, both by email and in communications, web, you know, webinars, letting us know about the Padilla Cornin legislation for the American Rescue Plan and the fact that it's recently passed in the Senate and it's on to the House. It provides additional funding, 350 billion, that's included in the American Rescue Plan Act. And we are all, you know, breathing a sigh of relief that that's happened and looking forward to opportunities to see what we can draw down from that here in our city. Also, we've been receiving updates from the White House on the economic growth with President Biden's Build Back Better Agenda. The White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs is, is in close contact with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, sharing additional updates on what opportunities there are for cities, continuing to urge that we push, you know, making sure that, that it's taken care of at the federal level as it goes through Congress. And with that, we do have, as Councilmember Early is on board, we do have some assignments to make. It'll, it'll alleviate, I think, with each council member who's carried on some additional assignments, some of their workload. And for now, we will be taking a look at assigning to Councilmember Early, the Water Resource Association, Yolo County Housing, Yolo Habitat Conservancy, Yolosa Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency, and the New Hope Community Development Corporation. So if you have any questions, please feel free to connect with your colleagues. This is Midyear and I know that they will look forward to greeting you as the new representative on behalf of West Sacramento. So thank you, Dr. Early, for that. And thank you, everybody else, for covering in the meantime. And
Thanks. I do have a question, but thanks, Dr. Early, too. But Madam Mayor, I'm assuming that we are those that were in those spots before we'll be moved to alternate? Is that, would that be?
Yes, they can be moved, as, well, we do have alternates for those at this point. And I have not changed the alternate for those. I took a look at that, but I have not changed. But if you would like to talk about that, I can, we can chat and go over and you could look at moving some alternates from those. So for the Water Resource, Resources Agency, we had Councilmember Ocala and you were the alternate for that. Did you want me to transfer somebody else or did you want to make another assignment for that? And also, Yolosa Basin Groundwater, you were the alternate for that. And for New Hope, Councilmember Ocala, I think, is interested in continuing to stay on as the alternate. And for the Yolo County Housing, she's interested in continuing on as a housing. I think if there was the Yellow Habitat Conservancy, Councilmember Orozco is your alternate. Did you, would you like to make any changes?
I, I will, I will take a, take one for the team here and give Councilmember Orozco relief as the alternate. I've been involved in that agency for years and gladly continue serving as alternate on that. So.
Very good.
But I will cede, sorry, Councilmember Ocala, I will cede alternate on the Water Resources one, since I haven't been to one of those meetings in a while. So you seem to have been there. I think that's the one I'm alternate for. If you don't mind, Councilmember Ocala.
Not at all. I think, so I think the only alternate change is going to be for the Yellow Habitat Conservancy for, for the record, for our clerk, who will make contact and, and notify the board members, the board staff about the changes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that would be very much appreciated. What we'll do is we'll reach out tomorrow to confirm the alternate appointments. We're very clear on the, on the assignments for the primary. And it is customary to have the council motion and vote on these assignments. Just a reminder of that.
Thank you so much for that. I'll accept the motion.
I'll know the recommended action.
I second that motion.
Madam Click, please, please call the roll. Mayor Protemla moved and Councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemla Desmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, that is approved. We'll move next to item 1C, which is council appointments, reappointments, and removals from, to and from non-city boards and commissions. We have two vacancies that we need to fill. And we have a couple of recommendations which have been floated. We have Dr. Early, who hasn't had a chance to give recommendations. So, you know, she had a chance to review the new ones that were coming in. So I recommend Sasha Horowitz to the Parks, Recreation, and Intergenerational Services Commission, and Anthony Volker to the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission. And is there a motion to approve that?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. Can you repeat the first name?
Sasha Horowitz.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So I'd make the motion. Get approved.
Councilmember Ocala moves.
I'm sorry, this was for the, the art preservation, sorry, just that.
Sorry, Sasha's for the Parks, Recreation, and Intergenerational Services Commission. There was a vacancy there and he will fill that vacancy. And Anthony Volker to the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission.
So I, I second the motion.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Early.
Yeah.
Madam Click, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemla Desmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco? Aye. Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you so much. Next is our Consent Agenda, item 2 through 11. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentations by our administration?
Yes, item four.
Item four, okay.
Mine will be six and seven, Mayor.
Mayor Protemla Desmond, do you have a request?
No, I can ask for seven as well. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with item four, which is consideration and award of professional services contract to hunt design for planning, design, and administrative support of the active transportation wayfinding signage program and approval of Resolution 21-88, authorizing the transfer of 17,449 14 cents from the community wayfinding pilot project, CIP 14011, to the inclusive TDM strategy project, CIP 11034. And who can present?
There's a lot of numbers.
A council member, would you, do you have your question on that? And Sarah, I think you're the.
I do. Okay. Yeah. Do I start with my, I start with my question, correct?
Yes, you can start with your question.
Just making sure. Um, so I'm really excited about this. And I had, I guess, question or suggestion. Sarah, you can let me know. So as I was looking, I, one of the things that struck me was the opportunity to bring in our art commission and potentially integrate local artists into some of the signage. I saw in the, the staff report out that was here, which is great, thank you again, that there was going to be an integration of art. And so my question to you, Sarah, is, is it possible? And so my question to you, Sarah, is, is it possible for our contractor, So Hunt Design, to actually also work with our art commission and/or integrate some sort of local artists? I would love to see a local artist of color in this project.
Yeah, the primary component that is gonna kind of dictate our ability to push into the art world in this project is resources. And so this is a grant funded program. We have a combination of funding that's outlined in the report from SACOG and the Clean Air Fund. And so the primary scope of work is really about getting that basic signage in to support active transportation wayfinding. And it all has to also meet signage standards and guidelines. I was very excited to try to explore what we can do to incorporate art. And there's a lot of different concepts out there. So the first step in our scope of work with hunt design is actually going to be, you know, taking a hard look at our budget and what are the best practices out there. And so through that workshopping process, and as we kind of get going on those initial steps, we'll have a better idea of how much capacity we have. And we'll be returning to, at a minimum, the TMI commission. If there is a significant art component that we're able to integrate with the resources we have, absolutely happy to go to additional commissions and discuss, you know, policies around how we should be evaluating for recruiting artists from the local community. And so we could return, you know, at a later time, once we have a little bit more information on what direction we're going and leave that the direction of the the city council, if there's additional resources that would be desired to be put forward, something like that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for that information. And also thank you for your willingness to explore how do we integrate local artists and also our art commission with this work.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Early. And are there any other questions for this item? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, consideration of West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce annual report. Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled number six is I want to begin by saying I think the chamber does a great job. I love the annual Christmas tree ceremonies that they've had. And I know they've been curtailed because COVID, but they're all so fantastic. They really bring the community together. And of course, you know, the annual chamber dinners, you know, are just fabulous. So my, my question is on behalf of some constituents, is there a breakdown somewhere online where they can see where the fifty thousand is allocated? Oh, it's broken down there. That, that's the question. That's the question. And I think Diane Richards, are you available or is anybody from the chamber here to provide a response?
Yes, Diane Richards here. Thank you for the question. I'm not clear on the question, the breakdown of where the funds are coming from or
Actually, where, how the funds are allocated, how they are distributed. I think that's what the question was. Some of the conversations I've had with community members, they've talked about having new signage, you know, for Christmas during that time. And I said, I'm not really certain where that comes from. And it seemed when I, when I saw the annual Christmas tree lighting, I thought this was something that perhaps, you know, the chamber took on. But there were just questions from the community about, you know, how the fifty thousand is, is used for these events. So I said, well, let me find out. Maybe there's a place that you can go. And that's the only reason I pulled this item, because transparency is so important for everything that we do. And, you know, I'd like to be able to, you know, have a place where they can go and look at the fifty thousand and how it was allocated.
Yes, I understand the question. No, thank you. So the chamber contract that we have in place currently provides for that fifty thousand dollars is an annual amount, contract amount, and it's four quarterly payments. And the contract for services in broad, broad brush stroke are business stations, business pension and outreach services, event production, legislative advocacy, advocacy to our business community, and then also economic development and government affairs related to city policies and fees and such items as those. So there is a whole scope of work that is a public document. I'd be happy to share that. It's also been on the agenda in the past, but those are the broad categories for how the fifty thousand dollars is allocated among the services that the chamber provides to the city's economic development.
Thank you, Diane. It is a question that I get asked by community members. I just want to make certain, you know, that they have a place to go and, you know, see these, these details. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Don't go away. I just, I wanted to pull this item, but it got pulled. And I do want to share my appreciation for the Chamber of Commerce. I have, you know, been on the Sacramento Valley Division, you know, we, we talk about some challenges that, you know, sometimes happen. And this is not one of them for us. It is, it is a treasure to have. And I can boast to my colleagues in other cities that we have a chamber where we get along. And they continually reach out through their lunches and their networking opportunities. You know, remember the first networking opportunity was crowded, packed, you know, with the mariachis playing. It was very nice. And it wasn't a mariachi, it was in a Mexican restaurant, but they were playing Mexican music. It was really nice. And they are very, you know, they, they do bring in, you know, the culture. You know, just reflect the diversity in our community, you know, among their board members, among, you know, the representatives of the, you know, community, you know, it could be small business, large business. And, you know, every time they have a ribbon cutting, they are doing a great job in celebrating and posting it and, you know, getting people to know who are our businesses in the community. When I read the report, I'm like, this is it? They do so much more. The first thing I said, said, Erin, I want to be able to talk a little more about what they're doing if I can, because I know you try to keep it short for us and I appreciate that part of it. But I did want to, you know, share that, you know, they do quite a bit. You know, I remember the planning behind the state of the city speech was intense. You know, if anything, Denise needed a bonus for that one. It's a lot of work and it was a lot of work under COVID, just to make sure, you know, we're all healthy and safe and nothing happened. You walked away, you know, with no impact. And that's what happened. Everybody was healthy and safe and we had an enjoyable time outdoors. So I just want to say that they do an excellent job. And, you know, we do contribute a little bit. I don't think any other cities really do that, but we do. And I think it's meaningful. And, and in return, I feel that the reward for the businesses, they get, especially under COVID, they get a connection on the reopening and the safe reopening and they are close to, you know, working with us, reinforcing those important messages. So we don't have, you know, some of those fights that I've seen in other jurisdictions. We have businesses who are adhering to the Yolo County Public Health Orders. And also maybe have a place to go to and ask questions, take a look at some of those small business grant opportunities. That's something Denise has been able to provide and just doing that outreach and also working closely in tandem with you. That relationship is pretty key for our success in attracting other businesses here in the city. So I just got to say that I'm really happy, you know, you love working with Denise and of course, that partnership with you is important. And I know we've done so much more throughout the year. We had two major openings of hotels. So, you know, you know, that's happened ever in the history for the city, just really nice hotels that are going to be attracting, you know, those tourists who are going to come into our city and we're going to have increased tax, tax dollars as a result of that. So that economic value is returned in some way because of the Chamber of Commerce and what they're doing. So I just, you know, for me, it's cost more than cost me, but I think, I think we get a bigger reward for the investment that we make with our chamber. And that's always hard to figure out how that happens. When you put in, you know, a dime, you get a dollar back and it's always hard to measure those. But I just want to be able to put a little shout out for her and, you know, and appreciate your partnership with her, Dan, and, and everybody in your department for the work you've done with economic development here in the city. Didn't want to ask if, Councilmember Rosso?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the, your sentiments on that last point. I think that the minuscule investment that we make to our chamber is well worth the reward that we receive. We have a very hardworking CEO and president and a new board that is charged and ready to go and has offered not only technical assistance, but the opportunity to, to support our business community in a way that that, you know, in a small community like ours, they do mighty things. And so, you know, from anywhere from the support dreams effort during the, I guess, it's arguable, but the, the height of COVID and assisting the city in trying to get grants to local businesses to operate outdoors. But also economic and government affairs sessions and other breakout sessions and a variety of activities after hours, bring our business community together in a cohesive manner so that they can better inform our council, but also better provide a support network for amongst themselves. And so I really do commend the, the chamber and appreciate seeing this on our agenda and I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item seven. And that item is consideration of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three approving the application for the Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant Program for Heritage Oaks Park Master Plan Improvement. And let's see, who asked who that item? My pencil.
I, I did.
Oh, Councilmember, go ahead.
Once again, it's just a very quick question. I know that we are contributing one million dollars and is the one million from the general fund or is it from grants that we acquired? That's the only question I have for public information.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala, Tracy Michael, Parks and Recreation Department. We, we anticipate the total cost of implementing the master plan to be approximately five million dollars. We are applying for three million dollars in grant funding. At this point in time, the grant application does ask the applicant to identify potential sources of funding to cover the balance of the project costs. So as part of the agenda report, we have identified park impact fee funds, that there's sufficient park impact fee funds to be the likely potential source of funding to cover any of the additional costs. Should we be fortunate enough to receive grant funding for the project?
This is Councilmember Early. I just want to clarify.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to clarify the two things. One, it's, it's two million that we're approving here, right? If we, if we approve, it's not one million. It's there for, applying for three. We'll, we'll approve up to two million. And then our hope would be that we get other grant funds. But if we, worst case scenario, if we don't, we would spend up to two million.
Yes, that, but the action is not actually asking for a formal approval of use of park impact fee funds. It's just asking for support of the potential use of park impact fee funds in the future. So normally, if it was a normal budget action, I would have a budget resolution and we would formally move the park impact fee funds into a CIP project for, for this particular project. I'm not asking for that level of commitment right now, just general support for the use of grant in the future.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you. I'd have to pull this form out of there if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just actually flagging the work here because the budget issue aside, right, the, this, this park, I live nearby it in the city almost every day. You guys have done a phenomenal job. We haven't, COVID has unfortunately kind of not allowed us to kind of be out and do ribbon cutting and all this sorts of fun stuff. But this was a, an area that, I hate aging myself, but move years ago on a planning commission to keep these heritage oak streets, oak trees in this area was a priority and an action we took at the planning commission. And now to see it used through the ropes program and the park is following, the facilities look great. The play area for the kids looks great. And this is the right kind of approach here. And then we have park impact fees, but we can, if, if I fully support using grant funds for certain types of uses. This is absolutely the right approach. And yeah, thank you for clarifying that we're not approving the budget for this to CIP yet. But, but this is good work. And I also want to commend the Park Recreation and Intergenerational Committee, Commission and the, I think you're going to Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission as well. Because it is sort of that sort of park and I think we figured out approach on all our parks is super important to make sure they get that commission feedback. So just wanted to, this flag at here, thank you for the good work for the team.
Thank you, Mayor Potemla Desmond. And I do want to also applaud the work you put behind this. Ms. Michael, I think that I, I've seen the park grow and, you know, it's been such a nice addition to that area of the community. It seems, you know, we, we do lack enough parks, but this is such a beautiful recreational area. And I've seen that they even hosted summer camps. So they are kind of attracting more recreational uses beyond just having, you know, hosting families. I know that the people are complaining about the price, but the summer camps was a really nice added bonus and us to be able to partner with them in the future to, you know, see, see what we can do to provide more recreational activities for our youth. And we know that, you know, we'd like to continue to build on that. And I can see that your creativity and the creativity of all the staff invested into this and looking at the renderings on what it is, you know, what else we can look forward to in the future for the community. So thank you so much for your work. And, and thank you to all the commissioners that have been spending some, some of their time to take a look at this and contribute their input for this. So appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, if I could add one more just quick item, it's, I don't think, we got some feedback earlier in the summer. As there's development right across the road happening on Village Parkway. And we got some comments on this. I, I forgot when, as that, as we were approving for, I think, the lots and the, the road work. And one of the things we had flagged, Miss I had flagged, and I think community members that set up is around the access or the will we have a road shoulder or not? And so I just want to take a moment to commend the other parts of the staff. Tracy or Erin will step in about which team did that. But working with that current developer to ensure that we had a shoulder where bikes can also access. That was a concern of mine, this park would be very much used. But from my understanding, they did, we, we did work with the developer that's working to make sure we have that stretch right across on Village Parkway, so that the shoulder width is there. So it, and Erin, I saw Erin go online to make, who that was. But, but again, it was a really great move by the city, kind of keeping it all together.
Thank you. I don't miss an opportunity to commend a member of city staff. So the staff person that worked at, I was kind of, you know, from Development Engineering Department, I'm sorry, Development Engineering Division of Community Development. So the latest is yes, they're, they're going to go ahead and complete that shoulder. So that you'll have the same width of, of a bike lane throughout the span of Village Parkway.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we wrapping up, I mean, our council comments, are there any? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak under public comment? Madam Clerk?
No request.
No request? Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment, read it back to council and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember, okay, can Mayor Potemla moved and Councilmember Alcala? Seconds, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemla Desmond?
You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right. With that, we will move next to our time set agenda, item number twelve, under Economic Development and Housing, is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution twenty-one dash fifty-nine abandoning a public right of way located at Tower Bridge gateway between Third Street and the Tower Bridge. And we have Ms. Katie Anci, our Community Investment Manager, will present on this item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to welcome Councilmember Early. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about this. Typically, these presentations are very short. There's this area that we're looking to have you abandon your right of way easement. But if you'll indulge me in a, in a minute to talk about this particular abandonment and the six, the momentum that it represents. In nineteen ninety-six, when the city council adopted the Washington specific plan, it talked in its land use and circulation chapters about the barrier that the former route two seventy-five was. And it recommended a course of action to take that land over from the state, from Caltrans, and to create three new at-grade intersections. And it put together a land use plan that said, once we've put those intersections in place, abandon those rights of way, have them consolidated to the adjacent property owners, and have development occur adjacent to this new Tower Bridge Gateway right of way. And so in nineteen ninety-six, this was the policy target that was established in two thousand, the CTC relinquished SR two seventy-five to the city. Two thousand and six, we built our first intersection in two thousand and ten. To the city. Two thousand and six, we built our first intersection. In two thousand and ten, eleven, we built the remaining two. This is my seventh transaction doing uh doing this kind of work where we have taken off little pieces of SR two seventy five. And consolidate it with the adjoining adjacent property owners, abandoning our right of way easements, going through the process of officially noticing all the utility companies that is no longer. A right of way. There's two more to go. We have the second phase of uh Wisket, Wisket your place to do, excuse me, and Grand Gateway. Um my apologies. But this one, this evening, is the last one. That would be occurring with a private developer, not a partner. And not a project that we are going to be going out to market with an RFP like Grand Gateway. So it's my pleasure to ask you this evening to consider abandoning the city's right of way easement. On the northern portion of uh Tower Bridge Gateway between the Tower Bridge and Third Street. And to also request that the council um adopt the resolution to twenty one dash fifty nine, conduct the public hearing. And to note that we are preserving two very large London planes with this action that are along the back of the sidewalk. And this is the first of the seven abandonments that I've done where we've recommended preserving the trees. Since my voice is going out, that's going to conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions after I take a drink of water.
Thank you, Katie. Take a breath. I'll let you take a minute. You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay. My apologies. It's the worst time that that happens.
I know it is. It is. Uh are there any questions among the council members? I don't see any. Um, okay. And I'll open it up for public comment. This point, are there any requests to speak under public comment, Madam Clerk?
No request.
Okay, I'm gonna close it with a public comment, bring it back to council. Any um. Any comments or I'll take a motion to move this item?
Madam Mayor, uh first of all, Katie, thanks for all your work on on this. Uh these are important uh sort of administrative tasks. But any any towards a goal that we wanted in terms of uh uh improving um the area here on the waterfront. So uh thank you for your work on this. And I with that, I'll make a motion uh for the recommended action.
A second. Okay, Mayor Protimadisma doesn't move. Councilmember Roscoe seconds. Um Madam Clerk, think, uh just want to, before um I ask for the role, I want to say thank you to Katie for her enthusiasm. Um, you know, as she presented all of the various um worked ones that she's done and the institutional memory knowledge and, you know, be this is a very delegate issue. Um and and what you've been working on. So greatly appreciate the work that you've done to make sure it's done right. Um and whether we're, you you know, trusting you because, you know, we're making the right decision, thanks to you. So um Madam Clerk, please, please call the role.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Ocala.
Aye.
Mayor Protimadisma.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Katie. All right.
My pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, under our regular agenda item is number thirteen, which is presentation on the city's participation in the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. And uh this is a very exciting um uh initiative, leadership initiative that the city has undertaken, um been receiving presentations uh and working. You know, just to see what's going on um with city staff. Um Mr. Robinson, our deputy city manager, kind of the taking the helm and the leadership. Um and looking forward to hearing your presentation here today.
Thank you. Can I give a second for our slides to come up? Thank you. Um my name is John Robinson. I'm deputy city manager with the city. And I was part of the part of the team that worked on this project over nine months. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's been a long time coming. We've been looking forward to the opportunity to present our work to you. So next slide, please. We wanted to start with thank yous. Um first of all, to Bloomberg Philanthropies and Harvard University and the Center for Public Impact, we're putting on this program. To Ruben Ocampo, our coach, who worked with us over many, many, many hours, and it was a privilege to learn from him. But mostly to the city leadership, the city council, to the city manager, assistant city manager, and the department heads who really made it possible for this many city staff to work on a program over this duration. And really feel like some very valuable work products came out of it and will continue to come out of it. And we hope that's clear with the presentation we've made tonight. But thank you. Thank you for making that possible. Next slide. This is our project team. I'm not going to introduce them individually because they are all, they are all on the presentation tonight. So you'll get to hear from all of them. So we wanted to be um self exemplifying in terms of being inclusive and having everyone get to participate. So we're we're doing that. Um I do want to point out the number of different departments that are represented. We did that purposely too with the idea being that, you know, as we learn these new innovation techniques. They would diffuse better through the organization if we had more departments participating directly rather than having, you know, five people from the city manager's office and then us going out trying to show everybody else. So next slide. So briefly, by way of background, the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative is an initiative of the of Bloomberg Philanthropies and Harvard University. The intent of which is to help local jurisdictions solve their most intractable problems by teaching them cutting edge innovation technique. And, you know, we we had the privilege of participating with other jurisdictions from around the country. It was a competitive process. Um every every community that participated had to submit a challenge. So what what was our, you know, what was the reason that the city submitted? You know, A, we wanted to learn the techniques that were being offered here, but also the the specific challenge that we submitted was one that we think is, you know, particularly, you know, apropos for the city. And it's the place where we're at right now, which is, you know, how can the city effectuate social justice and social equity through the investments that we make through our our projects and programs and the other investments that happen? So the idea was substantively through this work to start developing some concrete ideas of how we might do that systematically. Next slide. So this is the pathway to innovation. This is kind of a visual of the paradigm that Bloomberg and Harvard were teaching us throughout this program. You know, a whole presentation could be made just on this, but we'll just briefly, I want to point out the mindsets that are shown on the left side of the diagram. Um being impact driven, being creative, being people centered, being iterative and being collaborative. Those were very, those were very important. Those are kind of foundational to the overall program that we did. And you'll see those manifested in different places throughout the presentation throughout the program. Um I also want to point out, you know, the contrast between the techniques that we were taught in this program and kind of the the normal way or the historic way of approaching problems in the public sector. Which is, you know, understand the problem as quick as you can and then rush to develop a solution as quickly as you can. So that you're you're getting out in the field with with a with a solution. Um this is a more method- me- methodical process. This is a process that involves more community outreach, more conversations and iteration of different ideas and kind of learning from failure. So it's a it's a different, it really is a different paradigm to solving these problems. Next slide. So we're going to go through, um you'll see kind of areas of the of the innovation pathway illuminated as we go through. We're going to start with first phase, which is framing the problem. Next slide. And, you know, to do this, if we're framing the problem, it's basically getting your arms around what what is the challenge? What is the specific thing we're trying to solve? Now, obviously, we had to submit our idea of that as part of the application. And we were selected partially on that basis. But the the first part of the program was really refining that. We did that through mind mapping. So you'll see the little yellow things are, you know, virtual post-it notes that we used on a virtual whiteboard that we all shared, which was really interesting, and you'll hear more about that. But we spent a lot of time putting our ideas on sticky notes, moving them around, um trying to identify themes in the problems that we identified individually as team members through our own research. And then with that, we came up with an initial problem frame, which is our understanding of the problem before we'd gone out to the community and had the conversations that we ultimately had. So for the next step, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Thanks, John. Uh so as you can see here, we moved on from that original problem frame and really wanted to uh go out and conduct in-depth research as part of this program. In in order to check our assumptions and really help inform that original problem frame. So this was very much a resident led exercise. Uh it gave our team members an opportunity to interact and learn from West Sacramento in a way that we don't typically have the opportunity to in the course of our normal business. We ended up conducting over twenty interviews with residents and business owners throughout the city to discuss some of these key issues that we were analyzing. And as you can see in the lower right corner of the slide, we took extensive notes on these interviews to get as much feedback as we could. And also conducted other research, uh such as data review and walking tours. In order to give ourselves a a greater understanding of the issues we were looking at. And and you will see those sticky notes and images down there. Uh we we were able to use a very uh cutting edge technology, a Miro whiteboard platform. That allowed us to uh conduct what would normally be an in-person process uh virtually in a very seamless manner. Uh and so with that, I'll move on to the next slide, please. So here you'll see some examples of the rich feedback and and truly deep insights that we received into how residents view the issues affecting the city. You can see some of the folks here that we talked to. Uh for the, I think all of these folks were on Zoom, but we were able to get it done. And uh these were some of the more informative quotes that really got to the heart of the issues we were looking at. Thank you, Sarah. Uh so on this slide, you'll see again, we're back to our trusty graphic here showing the process. We've advanced from framing the problem and conducting that research into making sense of the large amount of data that we gathered. And using those insights to fully flesh out and reframe our problem statement. Next slide. So what you're seeing on this slide is how we took the various quotes we received from residents and our other observations as we conducted research. And worked as a team to analyze them and categorize them into some common themes. This was very interesting and enlightening uh as an exercise. It showed that even though we were working in separate teams to conduct this research. And we didn't necessarily realize that at the time, almost all of the feedback that we were seeing fell into just a few common themes here. Uh that revealed themselves once we came back and and did this uh process of making sense of the data. And we use the these themes to develop nine detailed insights into our original problem frame. These covered a broad range range of issues, uh just to mention a few, uh ranging from access and mobility to a desire for more community gathering places. To uh a latent demand for more city communications. And as you'll see on the next slide, um we show the two insights that we prioritized for problem solving as we as we move forward in the innovation process. We work collaboratively to kind of whittle down those those nine insights into into these two. As you'll see on the left, the first insight dealt with city communications with underserved and hard to reach populations. And the second on the right, dealing with equitable investments in city invest- uh equitable city investments. In and around older neighborhoods. So really, these insights, in addition to the many hours that we spent conducting interviews and analyzing uh the data and and our research, research. Really allowed us to embark on reevaluating our original problem frame with much greater understanding of not only how residents view the issues facing the city. But how they experience them in a way that uh we as city staff don't necessarily always uh experience ourselves. Uh with that, I will uh turn it over to my colleague Megan Stiles, who will go over our reframed problem statement and advance us through the program further.
Hi, thank you. It looks like um I'm not able to undo my um, oh, okay. Thank you, Lori. Um, all right. So now that we were able to obtain the critical insights from residents, we've moved on to reframing the problem, as Doug mentioned. So um here you'll see that we took our very broad original problem statement and used the feedback and insight that we gained to develop. Um a much richer and deeper problem statement. And so this um kind of revision process. Um allowed us to come up with with this revised uh problem statement, which is uh maintenance and infrastructure enhancements in older neighborhoods. Have been outpaced by investment in new developments where the built environment appears cleaner, less aged, safer and more inviting. And this issue is exacerbated by the fact that not all residents understand why and by whom catalytic investments in infrastructure are made or how they are meant to benefit them. So this is a problem because um, excuse me, for residents, particularly in older neighborhoods, including the portion south of US fifty. And this is a problem for them because investments don't always reach those that could benefit the most from them in our city. And this widens the equity gap between residents in different parts of the city. And it also widens the trust gap between residents of older neighborhoods and city hall. So using our resident outreach, research and analysis, uh it allowed us to make our problem statement actionable and something that we could start building solutions for. The next slide, please. So with this new reframed problem statement as a starting point, we then advanced on to the generate and test new ideas phase of the process, which begins with ideation. So the ideation process began with developing two sets of guiding principles, as you can see on the next slide. The first of these were our design criteria, as seen in the upper right hand portion of this slide. These are the things that the team felt that our solution must do in order to meet the needs and alleviate barriers identified in our reframed problem statement. In addition to the design criteria, we then developed how or how might we questions to guide our ideation session sessions, um as seen as in the upper left hand portion of the slide. So these were the basis for generating solutions with citizens. We took all of these guiding principles and embarked on a series of creative and collaborative citizen ideation sessions. Over the course of two separate sessions, um we hosted a diverse group of approximately twenty West Sacramento residents. And we generated hundreds of ideas that were aimed at solving our problem statement. We utilized techniques that were taught to us by our coach over the course of this process. And we were able to engage with residents and get them to think creatively and without any restriction in a really fun atmosphere. Um this process went totally beyond what our usual citizen collaboration, um our outreach would look like, as Doug had mentioned previously. And I think a number of us would agree that this was the most fun and enjoyable um and really exhilarating part of the whole process. So it was really interesting for us to be able to get ideas straight from residents um and kind of get them unfiltered. Um so the team then moved on to prioritizing and further developing these ideas to create a balanced portfolio of seven separate initiatives. That we organized on a scale that ranged from practical to bold, as you can see on the bottom of the slide. So eventually, we settled on two separate concepts that we then advanced into the next phase of the process, which is prototyping. The first concept that we agreed upon is um a social equity project score index. So this would use data to score projects based on their ability to create equitable outcomes. With the thought that this could greater inform our decision making uh and prioritization process. The second concept that we agreed upon is a new and improved city communication translation service to better communicate with non-English speakers um speaking residents. So includes translating more city materials, creating more communication mechanisms, such as informational kiosks. Um and so with that, we kind of move on to the next phase of that, and I'll turn it over to David, Sarah and Isaiah, Isaiah, excuse me, and they will discuss the prototyping phase of this process.
Good evening, council. Um I'm here to talk about the first um prototype that we developed in this project, which was, as Megan mentioned, the social equity project score index. Uh this was largely based upon an existing index called the California Healthy Places Index. And what it is intended to do is to provide an aggregate score for um any given project or initiative. As to how it may advance um social equity. So this was uh something we based off an existing model um that's out there and has multiple inputs. And so then um I'll show on our next slide how we we actually created this prototype. And which was a PDF that it was meant to simulate a website. And we put this, when we're doing our interviews uh with our city residents, um we put this up on the screen and asked them to kind of walk through it themselves as if it were a website. This is definitely nothing fancy, but it was enough to be able to get something out there, test, and then get feedback and then work on refining it. So the particular project uh here was the Sycamore Trail project. And it's what we used in this particular equity score. But the intention would be that this could be, this type of technique could be used for multiple kinds of projects, um not just at this um this trail project. And this is called a wireframe, by the way. This is created as a PDF, uh which would be ultimately then further refined with more functionality. Uh but the key was being able to get something together fairly quickly, um get it out to our community. Uh, but the key was being able to get something together fairly quickly, um get it out to our community members and start getting feedback on something here with not too much time uh investment, but the return on the investment from the feedback we got was very good. Uh, next slide. And so here I'll turn it over to Sarah uh to take us on this part.
Thanks, David. Uh, good evening, council members again. Um, so as David was mentioning, we used our wireframe prototype to then solicit input from a really wide range of stakeholders, actually, uh including not just residents. Um, but also some cross-departmental staff and even a couple of commissioners while it remained in this, you know, very basic, nascent, low fidelity kind of state. And so by getting that feedback early on, while this idea was really very simple and new, it made it possible for us to do things like catch some of those critical errors early on. Um, get ideas for other features or functionality that we might not have been thinking about at the staff level. Um, just kind of really understand what's the basic user experience like when they're trying to interact with something like this. And overall, just kind of get a pulse on what's the interest even in this concept to help guide future exploration on a, on a topic or a concept like this at the city. So what did we learn from all of this outreach? Well, we learned a lot, but some of the biggest takeaways that we've chosen to share tonight are shown on the slide. And I'm going to highlight just a few, but I also want to note, just kind of an overarching comment, that none of these concepts are ready to implement tomorrow. These are all like really big, long-term issues that are going to require ongoing outreach and workshops with our leadership and with policymakers to continue exploring these ideas. Um, I think one of the most important and critical aspects of what we learned that I want to highlight first and which became increasingly apparent as we continued through this process, talking to residents and staff, is that we really need to have an adopted definition of social equity. And what we mean when we say equitable outcomes at the city of West Sacramento. Um, you know, we've had a lot of really awesome and robust community conversations occurring at the regional level through things like the mayor's commission on climate change um or through SECOG on various different levels. Um, but at the end of the day, it's really important that we have a guiding definition um at the local level as well to enable the development of data and metrics that are consistent with our local goals for equity. Um, more broadly, just in terms of how these things have been defined in our regional discussions, they're often viewed as advancing equity as um ensuring that there's access to opportunities to have a high quality of life. Uh, making sure that the benefits and burdens of growth and development do not disproportionately fall on one neighborhood or group of people and seeking to right historic wrongs where possible. Um, you know, but in this process, we were really just scraping the surface. And so we quickly found that depending on who you ask, equity may mean something different. And what's really important about that is that it can hold really um strong implications for how you measure it. So we want to make sure that we're measuring the right things moving forward. Um, which brings me to another really big lesson that we learned out of this process, that data is another really important piece of this conversation. Um, so you know, how you measure the potential impact of a project or its performance over time. Um, that's a very debatable and and policy level conversation that we'll need to continue to have. Um, we didn't get a chance to really dig in on that at, at this low fidelity level of a wireframe prototype in order for us to be able to define a data set. Um, but there's things that already exist out there, really healthy literature on the subject, things like the Healthy Places Index that we can look to as a starting point. And there's also a lot of growing discussions occurring at the federal DOT level as well as in our region through SECOG. Um, so our involvement in this would really well position us to um not just do good for our community, but hopefully be aligned for future funding as well. And then a couple of additional points, um I will note that when we talked to residents, they were really honest in telling us, you know, if we created a website that just told you the social equity score for our project, they're probably not that likely to visit it if that's the only information they're going to get out of it. They, they really told us, we want more than that. We want information and we opportunities to weigh in on those projects, um you know, to so that they can voice where they want to see priorities in their neighborhoods. Um, and so kind of tied in with all of this um was another big point that came up, not just with residents, but also staff and um other stakeholders saying, you know, we want to see community input incorporated somehow into an equity score if we were going to do something like this. But that's actually a pretty challenging concept as well that I think a key next step would be, how do we explore an effective way of doing that? Um, that both engages community members, translates their feedback into a meaningful and fair process to help shape local investment priorities. Um, but you know, ensures that it's an accurate representation of folks as opposed to just hearing from the squeaky wheel or the, you know, kind of regular characters kind of thing. And so, uh, you know, there's a lot of benefits uh of this concept of a social equity index. One reason that um this was even selected for prototyping by our team was because it directly addressed our problem frame. Um, and there was a lot of reasons that we listed out here that we think that the city should continue to explore this concept. A big one is that it's really going to empower you and our other um leadership and decision makers by providing more data um to inform priorities and decision-making. Um, it can really help to just better understand what are priorities at the neighborhood level when we create those stronger channels to hear from our residents. And those things combined can really help to increase a sense of transparency, accountability and uh, you know, help mend and build trust with our residents. Um, as well as just really enhance communication. And you know, a big thing that came out of this process was realizing that a lot of residents don't understand why the city prioritizes things the way that we do. And so increasing communication and education around those subjects um can, and you know, reinforce some of the things I've already mentioned. Um, and then last but not least, kind of the core of all of this, of course, is to help ensure equitable investments, you know? Um, potentially looking at ways that we could incorporate a concept like this into perhaps a project prioritization framework for capital investments. Um, you know, maybe looking at, is this a tool that we could include to support permission and council policy deliberations moving forward? Um, and you know, wherever possible, can we start to highlight opportunities, rectify his work in equity? So with that, I will pass it off to Isaiah to talk about our second prototype concept that we explored.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, it looks like my video is unable. Okay, the prototype that our team used was idea card. Idea cards are various ways of city communications to reach West Sacramento resident. There was fourteen cards in total that was created and translated into Spanish and Russian. A total of five residents were interviewed via Zoom and advised the various methods of communications that would be offered if implemented. We included a Spanish and Russian, Spanish and Russian translator to assist during the Zoom meetings. Our team received great feedback as participants were engaged, they provided insight, and they ranked each idea card which they felt was most and least beneficial to the community. The most popular idea card was the electronic kiosk, which would be placed throughout West Sacramento where residents could find city information of their interest. As a result, our team decided to move forward, test this prototype. Next slide, please. Through the use of the local grocery store named Arteagus, um with a high concentration of non-English speakers, we tested whether residents will find the electronic kiosk useful. Hector, as well as other city employees, provided translation services and interviewed approximately sixteen residents. Some participants struggled to navigate through the screens and identifying the translation buttons. But overall, many residents thought the kiosk would be useful in paying utilities and receiving updates with city projects and job announcements. We received um supportive feedback from our participants and discussed modifications to the electronic kiosks to place in other areas of West Sacramento. Prototype testing assisted both teams with the next phase of the project. I will pass the baton back to John to discuss portfolio of initiatives.
Thank you, Isaiah. So we're in the last phase of the, the generate component of the, of the project. And I think the, the distinction here is developing a portfolio of initiatives as compared to developing one silver bullet solution. So uh we'll show you what that looks like next on the next slide. Megan kind of alluded to this before, but we, we took as part, one of the exercises that we were put through was to take the ideas that we had come up with and put them on this grid, and actually several different grids, but this was probably the most important one. Um, on the horizontal axis, you've got kind of bold on the right and practical ideas on the left. And then the vertical axis is very likely to be implemented on the top and less likely to be implemented on the bottom. And we spent some time uh moving our, moving our ideas around this grid, trying to assess kind of where they, where they went. And you can see that the ideas that we ultimately decided to prototype were, you know, the social equity index and the translation services, um each of which were the social equity one, we considered more bold and uh transformative, the translation services, a little more, a little more basic and practical. But the concept here is that we're trying to bring forward multiple ideas that address the, the problem frame and kind of diversify the risk of those in the same way that you diversify risk across an investment portfolio. So the other ideas that you see here, not necessarily all of them, but you know, several of them, the council is likely to see manifest themselves in other forms and recommendations that we make later on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kai Sa to talk about some takeaways.
Okay, well, thank you, John. So this was an amazing process. Um, but really, what did we learn? So uh how can we take all these things that we learned and then apply it moving forward? So these are just a few things that we took away. Uh, the process reminded us always to be people-centered. Uh, we need to be curious about people, build empathy, and then when we do this, it will lead to better outcomes. Um, and then we got to get creative, uh be okay with thinking about something new or different. And this can open up a lot more possibilities. Um, and then this process is iterative by design. And we should expect that success won't happen immediately. Um, and we also now know what a prototype is and then how to build one. And then with uh this, we can prototype solutions early and often, and then using those prototypes, we can get feedback um to control failure before too much time and energy has been invested. And then John just mentioned the portfolio of initiatives, so we only focus on the top two. Um, but this created, you know, a diverse portfolio that allows us to be more resilient, adaptable and then flexible. Um, all of these techniques that we learned are practical and scalable. And then after each point in the process, we were able to, uh, we were taught to reflect upon what we learned and then how to apply that to our work. So some of the reflections that we had um was we struggled through the solution part in the beginning. We wanted to jump right into that. We were hardwired to try to solve problems as quick as possible. Uh, but this process really encourages us to slow down and frame that problem. And then sometimes the problem isn't even what you expected. Um, you were to address assumptions and connect with stakeholders. And then sometimes the key stakeholders are not, are your underrepresented residents. Um, and then the second part that we, all, all of us um mentioned multiple times is one of our favorite parts of this program is simply bringing all of us in different departments together. Uh, we spent so much time together in the last nine months. And some of us have still never met in person. Um, but regardless of all the strong connections that we make, um it really made it working for the city uh rich and meaningful. And then we know we can count on each other moving forward. So I will pass it off to Hector for another reflection.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Hector Gramajo. Public works with those who don't know uh which department I am. But uh for me to have worked with the program, with my colleagues and with the community was really nice experience. Uh, my reflection was the uh work with the community and especially in the Spanish and the Russian community. And to hear from them, their needs and for us to provide them uh resources was really important. Uh, like uh Isaiah mentioned, we set up a kiosk, uh Arteaga Shopping Center with the city, with city information in different language and which showed them how to use it. I believe we have a lot of information that is really important for our community in different language. And I know that we can do the difference to our community. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Now I pass it to Lorian.
Thank you, Hector. I also worked on the team that was dealing with language-based outreach to the city. And one of the takeaways that was the brightest for me was the sheer enthusiasm we were greeted with when we were reaching out to people who did not have English as their primary language. When we reached out to them in the language they were comfortable speaking, the ideas after the initial reticence to reply came pouring out. And along with their ideas came volunteerism. They suggested that they could help with phone trees, or they could help translate things, or they could take mailings and share it with their neighbors and their friends and their families at their churches and their grocery stores. And seeing the fact that the people who felt almost marginalized by the city's propensity to only advertise and convey information in English, um giving them the opportunity to see something in the language that they were the most comfortable with was really insightful and brought to light an issue that the city needs to reach out and address. And with that, we'll go back to John.
Thank you, Lorian. So we're, we're at the, we're at the deliver phase now. So basically, what are the, what are the next steps going forward? Next slide. So for the, for the communications item, uh we're actively working now in community relations on a suite of ideas that we want to refine using some of the techniques that we've learned from the Bloomberg Harvard process, but ultimately we want to bring back those ideas for council consideration next year. So these, these are pretty practical ideas, likely to include, you know, different forms of communication, definitely more um translation services in different modalities. So we're working on that right now. I'm planning to bring a proposal back in next year. On the social equity index, we're working on building out a, a working prototype of an index. And this, like Sarah alluded, this, this is a complicated effort. So you know, our initial work product is going to be very simple and we view this not as a one-off effort, but kind of an ongoing thing, but we would like to get something on the board. So we're working on a prototype for that to, to show the council. And we'd like to share that during the council strategic planning retreat in February. And then assuming the council conceptually is on board with that approach, we would work during two thousand twenty-two to continue building that out and hopefully by the end of the year have a working, a working model of that that would be in effect for the city. So with that, um, next slide. That's, I believe, the end of our presentation here. I know that was a lot. We spoke for a long time, so you don't uh, you know, if you don't have to engage anymore if you don't want to, but we welcome your questions and we'd be happy to hear your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That was very informative. And I'm going to um take it over to council to see if there are any questions among council members. Council, Mayor for Tim LaDesma?
Oh, thanks. I, I know we have um a really driven data uh person on our council now, so I'm, I'm no better than, than get between her and this kind of presentation. So I'll keep it short, but um really this, this is uh some amazing work. Um, I'm really impressed um to, to the staff. Um, I was, I, I reading through the, the um presentation before council meeting tonight was, I wasn't quite sure what, it didn't give the voice to kind of um what I'm hearing from, from all of you about the experience of kind of entering into this process, talking to residents and, and kind of considering these, these kind of factors. Um, I think this is one of the more challenging things we've always dealt with at council is sort of being able to distill down or, 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 it's not the right word, but kind of to, to really gather the data and to gather the, the, the sentiment uh the community to be able to prioritize, right? So and, and to make what, what you are doing under, you know, A, are we, is it benefiting the community in ways we think it is, or do they understand it to, to that way? So um I, I just think it's a really kind of bold initiative in the sense that it's really challenging us to how we might think about in the future, um prioritizing projects or communicating our residents and getting that feedback throughout that process. And I just really am sort of absorbing it and, 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 but the voice of all of you working together and it seems as though the voice of all of you working together, and it seems as though uh that that's what I'm taking away is that you felt fulfilled, all of you did, in sort of working through this and seeing outcomes you weren't expecting. Um, and so that didn't come to life. I'm just reading the staff report, but it certainly I could hear it in your voices and and how you were able to to uh communicate to our residents and get their feedback in new ways. So I I I I just like the idea of of how do we build upon the communication? How we continue, how we look at the 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 social equity index. That's particularly of interest to me. Um, um, as we go forward in the in the next decade um with the community investments and 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 as we work towards um kind of continually improving our city and moving forward, being able to kind of find a way to 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 help us understand it how it how those projects might be adding the right kind of value that we're looking for. So it it's sort of a a a method to do it. So anyway, I'm just really interested in this. I'm really glad. Thanks to the staff or John for the leadership for us, but all the team uh going going through this exercise. It was really great to hear all your enthusiasm and your voices. So so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor for Timba Desa. Um, I think Councilmember Early flashed off and um wanted to give her a chance to go next. Thank you, Councilmember Early.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so so one, wow, what a way to start off my first meeting. This is amazing. Um, talking about social equity um and trying to be innovative and actually truly understanding that there is this need um within our community and there is this um feeling. And that was reflected actually in the community engagement that you guys did um of feeling a divide, whether um it's intentional or or not, right? Um, that our city sometimes feels divided and the residents have voiced that. And so for me, this is amazing, trying to look at innovative ways to address a real community need. Obviously, we know the goal is going beyond equity, the justice, right? To removing the barriers that are contributing um to the inequity. Uh, but starting there and and having that North Star be um be equity and eventually justice um is key. Um, I have I have a couple of questions. I won't go too in the weeds um on data. Uh, one of them was in regard to our our social equity um project score index, which again, amazing that you want to be that transparent in scoring your project and ensuring that you really are um being as equitable as possible. Um, how how was community engaged? So on that, you had, I think you said twenty-plus residents that initially contributed. How did you find those residents and how did they notify you?
We started, we we started with our own Rolodexes. So we had, you know, a pretty diverse team. So within within the team, we had different contacts and different kinds of contact. And we tried to, we tried to avoid biasing our own sample. So we tried to find people, you know, we tried to find business people. We tried to find people living in different parts of the community, people with different backgrounds. But it was done kind of a, it was kind of a conscious sampling method.
Snowball sampling.
Yeah, there was no, there was no randomness to it. I mean, we we but we did try, we did try to diversify, you know, the types of folks that we get so that we get, you know, a cross-section of input.
Yeah. Um, I I so so one, again, I I really appreciate this and what I would hope, um, what I hope my 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 fellow council members support the work that you guys are doing and that when we see it um in February during our strategic retreat, that this is something we can really dive into. But the second hope would be um that we also, in the same way, um, we reached out to different community members um at Artega, right? Like, we went to where the communities that we were trying to impact the most um actually are, that we would do the same with this kind of of work as well, right? And so your second iteration, your third iteration, going beyond sort of our snowball sampling, but also trying to reach again those who were were trying to impact the most. So so thank you very much.
Councilmember Rosco?
Well, thank you. Much of what I wanted to say has been said. Uh, I'm just happy to see racial equity and inclusion work on our agenda and to have received this presentation. Um, it's a metric for consideration on for is a potential, I guess, metric for consideration, future investment. And as we now navigate uh these decisions as a full council, uh, we've been active in this space in some of the decisions we've made even, you know, before I joined this council. And um maybe not to this extent where it's we've sent a group to actually do the you know, cognitive work of wrapping our minds around how we approach this as a tool to be used, but um, you know, looking at issues such as via and looking at um, you know, for example, uh, both Chris LaDesma, Councilmember LaDesma and and former Mayor Cabaldin and the West Sacramento Police Department. They were authors of Measure N, which was not only to increase public safety funding, but also to fund inclusive economic development and other community improvements in areas that were not as competitive for outside funding or lacked opportunities for development where we, you know, would normally get state park impact fees. And that would be, you know, such projects as the Sacramento Avenue Corridor and 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 Bright Park, uh, which is one of the biggest investments that we will be making and have made um in other areas that need to be improved throughout the city. I I just think this is a fantastic tool that will help guide our investment of public tax dollars beyond just not only just measure N, but uh to identify those projects that might be competing with other major projects throughout the city. But also, you know, we could use this as a tool to evaluate how they measure up to one another because we can equally all say, well, this community's, our community says this, that, or whatnot. But it might just be a a small group within a particular area of the community. So who do we, who do we consider the quote, community, the voice of the community? There are very many voices. And I I just think that, you know, this this measure is a very good one. I appreciate the work of this group uh to 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 navigate this journey and helping us make more informed decisions. And um, I I mean, I appreciate that we're actually doing something about it instead of just pontificating or just talking about it. And um as as Councilmember Early uh ref- referenced, you know, the equity versus the equality grid. Um, I I've seen that before. Um, some of us probably have in the past. I actually, she re- referenced the third, the third square. You know, the first one being that everyone will benefit from the same supports and are treated equally. And the second image being that individuals are given different supports to make it possible so that we raise the bar for certain areas so that they can see over the barrier. But ultimately, our goal as a council should be to remove the necessity for the accommodations because the cause of the inequity has been addressed and that systemic barrier removed. So I I think this is fantastic. And thank you, John. Thank you for the whole team who has been so thoughtful and uh provided this presentation to all of us.
Thank you. Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also want to uh thank the cross-departmental team. And, you know, I think this was really something very important for for a city to be doing. Um, when I first got on the council and I had an opportunity um to meet with the different West Sacramento staff. One of the questions I often had was, how many people of color do you have working within your departments? I think it was really important because these are the people who our community will be more than likely to reach out to. When they see people like themselves, they will feel much more comfortable coming to individuals, you know, who they they feel that they have a commonality with. And I was very pleased with the majority of the departments within the city of West Sacramento seeing that they were very diverse. And I think that was very, very important. So we'd already been doing some of that work. And um something that we can be very proud of is the city. I did want to mention a few things. I'm glad uh Councilmember Early asked, but that was going to be my question. Of those twenty people, how many were people of color from what communities, what socioeconomic backgrounds, et cetera? I think you probably covered them all. But there are sometimes, as council members, we know people within communities who who are leaders in their communities, who really have incredible um following uh within those communities. So once in a while, maybe a good idea um to occasionally consult this, maybe we can just make some recommendations. I know some incredible Latino leaders um within, you know, with Sacramento that actually have the um trust and and ears of, you know, many individuals, well into the hundred, two hundreds. They're incredible community leaders, like Maria Garcia, for example. You know, she's one person that I I worked with as a school board member. She would come to our school board meetings and she'd bring, I mean, she'd pack the house, let's put it that way, when there were concerns about um, you know, one one of the schools, something that wasn't being done. She would bring us a huge roster of individuals. So I did want to mention that. Also, thank you so much for going to Artegas. I think that was great. I know there's problems with the the navigation of the um, what is it called, the kiosk? So that may be something you should think of, maybe, you know, having a much more simplified form. And then finally, um, some other great places would be um, maybe like the Sikh temple. Maybe they would allow you to put a kiosk there or the Afghani uh community. They also have them, you know, uh available there or even even some places like, I know there are places like um Saint Mary's Church that has um, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks that attend there. So this, this is just some ideas I wanted to throw out there. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. And um, you know, this is my my second time receiving this presentation, and I still learned a lot um from everyone who presented today. Uh, and some of it is also, you know, sometimes I'm just focusing on on the information, but the sentiment, um, the heartfelt sentiment of being able to be a part of the Bloomberg Philanthropies, um, you know, project. Just the uh, I recall in in the um prior presentation that I've had uh and and in working with the Bloomberg Group so that I can understand better what this is about. Um, the the model and the teaching behind getting down to resolving some of what are our our communities, you know, concerns that are, you know, just the undercurrent but not really elevated, and how do we get to the root of that? And in looking at what you've accomplished here, um, you know, from from those of us who are out there meeting with the residents um and and talking to the leaders and being able to present it and articulate it and identify specifically what we've been hearing, um, it is, you know, just so um, just like rewarding for all of us to see that you've put that time and energy. Um, and we greatly appreciate that. Uh, one of the things I I wanted to mention um to the council members is that Mayor Cabaldin, Pastor Mayor Cabaldin is the applicant of this initiative. And uh, so when I came on board, I had a little sit-down meeting with the, oh, by the way, um, this is something we're going to be digging into and you're going to be, mayor has to be involved. I'm like, well, okay. I had no idea what it was about. Um, but I will say that I'm really um thankful that um uh Pastor Mayor Cabaldin got it, you know, got us involved into this um project. And I think everybody that you've heard from, and I I believe it's a much broader team of people than who we saw here today, um, has felt that this is uh just an eye-opening experience, um, a culture change among how we've done things in the past. And, you know, just the excitement of how to do things different in the future. And um some of the ideas that, you know, Councilmember Alcala shared, you know, going into um the mosques as well. Um, and, you know, they they also have, you know, some like, you know, sometimes like Yola Food Bank has distribution locations where we can partner with them. Um, because one of the ideas was to be able to pay your bills. How do you pay your bill without having to go to City Hall? Or if, you know, you can't find anybody on the phone, you could do it at a kiosk. So those kiosk ideas is to, you know, to produce them and to um have them accessible so that there is more transparency of information. Not everybody goes online. Not everybody has access to, you know, or can figure out how to navigate the internet. Uh, and just for them to be able to figure it out in, you know, embedded in their community where they frequent, whether it be a shopping center or um uh community gathering location. Um, or if it's a, you know, a church, that's what they're primarily what they do, or in, you know, even for those that are older residents, when they gather, whether it be in the community center, you know, when they get together and they can have access to that information. So it's, you know, even though you've you've been doing this um through COVID, uh, it's an, it it's a testament um uh on your expertise to be able to still gather some hardest-to-reach members of our community and bring and um this vital information. Um, and, you know, synthesize it in, you know, as um, you know, Councilmember Early puts it, in a way that we can identify through data what's important to residents in our community. Well, we're excited to see what's going to happen next in our strategic planning retreat. Um, so, you know, looking forward to that. And thank everybody and applaud everybody for the work and the energy they have put into this. So thank you so much, Sean. And um, if there's no other comments, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Um, are there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
There is no, oh. That Maria, do I have a?
Go ahead, Maria.
Thank you for this opportunity to uh speak. I want to thank uh John Robinson for this effort. Uh, I think one of the first things that I couldn't help but observing is that his team uh is more than fifty percent uh uh not of color. In other words, it's more than fifty percent uh white, if I may use that term. And so when you were trying to seek out participants and you went to your Rolodex, uh, the probabilities are that you are going to find uh more white people to uh be uh participants. Uh, it's my uh assumption. But one of the things that was very nice to hear, and I'm sorry I don't have my timer on, is that we need to make uh right historical wrongs. And so for the past uh uh since two thousand uh up until two thousand eighteen, the Latinos and people of color in the north area were considered a nuisance because we were under a nuisance order, a gang injunction. And it was just a three-mile area. And so there's a lot of historical wrongs. We lost our swimming pool. We lost our Little League because three or more kids, teens could not hang around together. And so we lost our Little League. We lost our boxing program. And so this this thing that you said about building trust again, uh uh well, how about we start with some type of infrastructure investment such as sidewalks? We don't have sidewalks in the north area of town. And how about some free transportation for the kids to go to the swimming pool at uh in the south area? How about that? Uh, so, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. And so it looks like you still have another, a lot of time, but please uh uh keep us in mind. Uh, I mean, a kiosk, okay, okay, I guess, you know, that's a start. But uh, how about free transportation for the teens so they can go to the swimming pool? Uh, how about that? Or just, you know, sidewalk? Anyway, I don't have a timer on. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Um, thank you. Are there any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay, I'll close the public comment, bring him back to council. Are there any other final comments? I think we um received the report and um there's no other action taken at this point. Yeah, okay.
And Madam Mayor, this, I I'm sorry, I cut it. I my computer picked a funny time to cut out for a second, so I'm back. Uh, but I just heard that last uh commenter, but just one thing to remind her that yellow bus uh fares are still free uh for uh kids up to eighteen. I just wanted to remind the public that fell out there.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't I don't know if we post that on our website um or advertise it, maybe even to the schools, so kids are aware. Um, maybe we could work on that. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, um, everybody for your presentation today. And next we will go to Council Calendar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, just a reminder that uh next Wednesday will be the ribbon cutting at the Corporation Yard, that's at ten AM. And then uh there was going to be a city-county two-by-two meeting on that Wednesday as well, but that's been canceled. And there'll be a special meeting set, I think it's set for early December. That's all for me.
Thank you. City Manager Report?
Um, the only thing I was going to mention tonight, just because it was mentioned a couple of times, is the functionality for closed captioning on Zoom is something we've been uh looking into and working on really since the start of the pandemic, we started hosting virtual meetings. Uh, Zoom has been working on it too. Uh, it was mentioned earlier that that is a added functionality. So that that I just wanted you to know that that's something that we're um trying to get incorporated into our our uh live meeting. So um I'll give you an update on that once we have more uh more to share. So thank you.
Thank you. And step direction for, oh, sorry, City Attorney Report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, step direction from City Council Members? None? Okay, we have, I have a future addenda item request that I submitted to ERIPR our um our uh requirements. And um I've submitted a request for consideration and City Council approval at a future meeting, a community workforce training agreement. Uh, I have um submitted this in the past um as a planning commissioner um way back in twenty sixteen. And um this was And um, this was a request I made in um, the general plan uh, for twenty thirty-five, and it was rejected. Um, we didn't have a robust discussion, we didn't really have a discussion on this, but it's something that I strongly believe. That I um, have seen residents um, who have asked for interest to. Be a part of a trade and to have an opportunity to work local. And I um, have just had conversations with residents and um, the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades members. And have toured their programs and learned a lot more about what it is they have to offer to our community that I have felt strongly. To see that we um, you know, have and establish a community workforce training agreement. Because it provides an opportunity for many in our community, who, who we, you know, sometimes um, see in our home run program, where we're providing support for their children. Um, you know, to, you know, establish an account for a college promise in the future and, you know, get their, get, you know, get the children to go to college. Um, but I would like to provide support for their parents um, so that they can uh, find an opportunity and um, we can help. Build equity as we have in our strategic plan. Um, we are seeking a diverse workforce and we made. Some financial investments to achieve that and been successful, do you know, to add new hires. Who um, represent the diverse, that diversity our community does have. And um, with that, I think that the Community Workforce Training Agreement provides that level of equity and inclusiveness to provide support within um. What we are doing, we have many projects in the city um, that are coming forward. And uh, even the President's Build Back Better Infrastructure Proposal is promoting apprenticeship programs. How COVID has impacted us, um, you know, and we've seen, you know, the, the significant impact among the people of color. Who are more at risk, um, they're, they're the ones who are in the front lines, they're the ones who are um, both working in hospitals, um. There are our janitors, um, cleaning up offices, and there are, there are people who are seeking, and I've talked to other community members who are seeking. Better opportunities, and I believe that a community workforce um, training agreement, you know, establishing that as part of our policy. Um, you know, will help further that effort and as far as a recommendation that we can move forward, and I. Would like to see, you know, um, further, you know, discussion of this um, in a meeting, that's why I'm requesting it as a future agenda item. Um, so that we can take a look at uh, establishing this in the future. Uh, so just. Yes, Councilmember.
I would, I would also like to, to, to request that for a future agenda item. I agree with you.
And we do, I believe, need a um, vote to make this happen, and so if um, Councilmember Alcala, did you move?
I will move, yes.
Thank you. And are there any questions among the councilmembers?
Uh, no questions. I, 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 I don't think we need to vote to move any agenda items, as long as there's a consensus. Um, but, there's a motion on the floor, so I'll let it, right.
Okay, Councilmember Early?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, only because I'm new. So, um, so I know one of, one of the things that i- is probably unique, I think is unique about our city, again, I. I love West SAC and I love our leadership, and I think um, we've done an amazing job, is that we have our, our strategic plan. And in February, you guys, and now me, go on this retreat. In which you, you talk about what the priorities are, right, for that year, and you decide, okay. This is what I'm gonna have you guys work on, meaning the city, moving forward. And as someone who actually staffs a commission and has staffed the commission and a council for the past five years, that's amazing. To be able to have that kind of direction, and I think it's part of what has made us successful. And so I think. One of the things that would be helpful that I would ask of you guys, because again, you had your retreat, I was not there. Um, when you met back in February to talk about what the priorities are for this year. What, was this one of them? Because I know you said in twenty sixteen, you said, you know, when you were on the planning commission, this is important, and it's important to me too, by the way. Right? And I think you, I think everyone here knows that. Um, was it part of the conversation in February?
Uh, Councilmember Early, no, they were, they're, this was not a part of the conversation. And there, and this future agenda item request is also a process that we have um, to make recommendations for further discussions, you know, in the future. And um, which, you know, if, if we follow that process, it does require a vote. Um, so we do have our strategic planning retreat process for some things that are actually carried over year over year. So it, it um, it does fill our agenda, you know, on, on those projects, whether it be the streetcar. Um, or light rail planning, um, whether it be smud annexation, um, and, you know, we've also, you know. Added a few things this last year, which um, were important because. It rose to the attention of council that we needed to make some changes, you know, such as establishing broadband access and affordability for all. Given how COVID has impacted us. You know, we have had a number of other initiatives and, you know, Councilmember Roscoe brought up Measure N, for example. That was not in the strategic planning um, retreat process, but it was a consideration. It was a consideration after the measure was passed, but it was brought during the course of the year. As, as a need. Yeah, I don't think it was in the February and then you passed it and then you, you know, I know we discussed it after the passage of it. Um, but.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the, so the American Rescue Plan, for example, is something we are taking a look at, given new funding. And it, and we will be seeing a number of initiatives coming forward for us to consider, and um, that's because we have funding. Um, so, we also have the President's Build Back Better Infrastructure Proposal, and that is um, pouting the apprenticeship programs. So when we have initiatives coming, you know, from the federal level or even the state level. Where, you know, for example, the broadband access and affordability for all came from the state, you know, legislative proposal. Um, that's something I'm really proud of, of West Sacramento, is that we can pivot, is that we can pivot and adapt. And make sure that we are um, structurally, you know, um, you know, or strategically positioned. To be able to make sure that we can implement some of these um, opportunities that are brought down at the federal level. Or state level, or whichever way. But go ahead, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pretend Ledesma?
Thank you. Measure, uh, well, just um, to help Councilmember Early, a lot of the issues that the, at the, at the retreat. And I've been involved in ten, eleven now. Um, it is a really good time for. Uh, it is, it is, it is a process that by and large has worked. It has kept our eye on the ball on some major initiatives. The mayor did bring up a couple, the streetcar was one, smud is always at the top of that list, um, because that, we have to keep our eye on that ball. So it, it, it's a tool, and I know the city manager's probably wanting to weigh in on this, it is a tool for us. Uh, to prioritize, to come to some consensus about those core issues. There are new ideas that are brought forward at those, at those uh, uh, items. One of them I brought forward in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, which was a need for uh, improved mobility and transit, which. Led to, uh, I convinced uh, my colleagues at the time that this was a need. Uh, the work that put the city staff on uh, a work plan, uh, which was part of the priority for them. And that's how it translates to that, that led eventually to VIA. Um, so while VIA was not a item at the, at the future planning session, uh, per se. Um, we talked about those needs and we were able to incorporate that. There's a lot of things I've proposed in the past that frankly, never made it onto those lists. Um, that I won't recount those either, but um, uh, but I've, you know, we, we have to make choices. Uh, there's only so many staff members we have. Uh, we have, as the mayor pointed out, our, our current strategic plan we agreed to in uh, April. Um, I thought was a good one. COVID disrupted a lot of our priorities from twenty twenty. Um, and we decided that it was smart to help staff and support staff kind of move those forward with the one we added, which is around uh, uh, exploring annexation in the smud. Um, so those kind of things still made the cut and we have to agree to, so, and it helped staff kind of keep it, so. Um, I think to answer your question, um, I, I will say too, Measure N was not on the agenda as a Measure N, it was, it was. We were, it was discussed in the context of a financial discussion in uh, two thousand eighteen, because I think. I brought it forward in that vein, uh, that we, we would have to look at a tax measure. And it allowed staff to kind of work on what that would be, but ultimately became uh, Measure N and, and got onto the ballot by the twenty. Um, I was eighteen, right, uh, twenty eighteen election cycle. So anyway, just to kind of clarify, that, that, that's generally how it works. And um, I, um, so it is an important process for us that's allowed us to keep focused. Uh, we do make times where. Some opportunities uh, that benefit the community or otherwise, uh, we will, um, we, we find the time for, that, that is true. Um, but I don't, you know, want to make the inclination that some things, you know, aren't. That is a big driver of us, this sort of uh, for the city, at least for me, that city staff uses as the ability to kind of keep focused. And kind of complete projects as we have done uh, over the last uh, dozen or so years. So, just to give you some background, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Led.
That does help. I, um, I do have two follow-ups.
Sure, and I, and I just.
At my first meeting.
I know, it's a.
Um, and, and there's a lot. So, so I guess my two calls would be, um, one. What, if, if, if we were to, to do this, right, we're going on it, um, is there something to, to Councilmember Ledesma's um, point? Is there something that the staff can't get done if they, if they, they embark on this? And then I guess my second question is, what's the difference between saying, we want this on some future agenda versus saying, we want to discuss this in a retreat? Because our retreat's in February, right? So it's, it's.
Those are questions the city manager answered.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, sorry, I, I wasn't uh, necessarily turning on my camera because I wanted to speak, I just wanted to remind you, I'm, I'm here in case there's questions. So a couple of things, one. Uh, just want to remind you, we need to be careful about uh, not discussing the substance of, of the issue uh, tonight, because it, it isn't agendized. It's simply on this item as a consideration for a future item request. Uh, I, I'll go back though, I, I, uh, the council already knows this, I've, I've previously made my recommendation. Um, to the council on this item, uh, in terms of how we, how we deal with it. So this would be a major policy undertaking for the city. Um, you know, community workforce training agreements, project labor agreements, i- is a major policy consideration. And so because of that, it's already been discussed among the council. Um, you know, we have the process, and I propose that if there is uh, a consensus, which I'm, I'm hearing, that there's at least an, an interest. Uh, a consensus interest among uh, the group to discuss this further. Uh, then we would uh, ask you to direct staff to uh, do further research, uh, prepare policy. Uh, background, legal background on the topic pertaining to the item, and to bring it forward, as was mentioned, as part of our uh, upcoming retreat. Uh, so that's just around the corner, and, and just to familiarize more people with the process. We do in-depth, more in-depth analysis with those uh, kinds of items than we would with a normal staff report. Uh, we take more time to do it. Uh, we present in an issue paper format, we do presentations, we give the council the information you'll need. Uh, so that we can make an informed uh, recommendation, so that you can in turn make an informed decision. Uh, that's really the, the key for our job in, in this strategic planning process. So that approach, uh, given the timing, will give staff and the attorney uh, the appropriate amount of time to evaluate it, uh, to prepare those recommendations and information. Um, and also to do it in the context of other strategic planning priorities that the council already has and may have in addition to this one. Um, and, and also not divert us from our, our current workload and priorities for the time being. So um, so that's really my recommendation. I don't, I don't personally, you know, I don't need a, a vote on that. Uh, to see that there's consensus and to uh, direct someone on our staff to begin working on this uh, project, and also the city attorney is hearing this as well. Uh, but of course, that, that last point is the council's uh, call, you know, uh, it doesn't need a vote from our perspective, but. Um, ultimately, it's up to the council, but I'll stand by that recommendation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And um, just to add, historically, um, you know, councilmembers have voted. On, you know, major policy changes, for example, within the police department um, in, in My Brother's Keeper. And um, you know, that, that happened mid-year, but that happened also because there was, that, you know, there was a moment where we needed to evaluate. You know, what changes needed to get done. Um, and as I mentioned, you know, bringing that, um, you know, you know, to your attention, the President's Build Back Better Infrastructure Proposal. This is something that I feel that is, you know, an urgency, that we do need to get something done. I'm not asking for, you know, next week, I do know that this takes time. Um, to prepare a recommendation. Um, but I also know historically, um, the city has made contracts, um, you know, and. Uh, processed bids, and, you know, for example, the fire station, um, where Station Forty-five was not, um, you know. You know, um, structured properly, it was built, and um, there was a, a major expenditure done after that fixing. So. I do know that this is important, and that's why I'm, I'm requesting a vote. You know, if, even if it's having in the strategic planning retreat, that it does happen there, um, you know, so that we can, you know, as council demonstrate that this is an urgency.
If I can, if I can have one moment, I, I just want to clarify what's going on.
Sure.
The, the consideration tonight is whether to bring an item back. For the council to discuss. This is not voting on whether to adopt a particular program, right?
That's true, that's exactly it.
So, um, and we need, we do need to be careful. Historically, the way we agendize this particular item is not really for discussion. Right? It, it's just to present it and get a consensus from the council, whether you want it to come back at a future meeting. Because of the manager's suggestion that it come back as part of the strategic plan. I think it would be appropriate to get some further direction from council, whether you want it. Ahead of the strategic plan or as part of the strategic planning process. But I, I just want to make sure that we don't get too far into discussing the merits of, of the proposal, because that's not really what's on the agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Roscoe?
I just wanted to address um, a comment, Madam Mayor, that you made about our discussion about policing and the MBK Alliance. That actually was on the twenty twenty strategic planning agenda, policy agenda that we all discussed, we were there. And we placed that on the policy agenda for, as an item that we would discuss and we would prioritize. This last year, just, just a few months ago, we met as a council of four, and we chose. Uh, of large varieties, some of which have already been me- mentioned, the flood control, light rail extension, climate action plan, inclusive economic development strategy. Mobility Action Plan Implementation, Early Learning Assessment, the Home Run Program, Bridges, Ice Street Replacement and Debt Conversion. Exploration of Smud Annexation, Storm Water Flood Protection and Maintenance, Police Advancement, Retail Cannabis Evaluation and Direction. Broadband Access and Affordability for All, that's thirteen. But then we also tasked our, our staff with. The Management Agenda, which is Homelessness and Community-Wide Impacts, Grand Gateway Development, Washington Specific Plan Update. Entertainment District, Public Safety and Security, Municipal Workforce and Management Diversity, Rail Impacts, Relocation and Removal. Performance Measurement Program, EIFD, uh, Development Tools, the Riverfront, Farmers Market, and COVID Resiliency, and more. At no time was there any mention of a community workforce training agreement, that was a wonderful opportunity for us to have engaged. Uh, and taking that on, but instead, we, we entertained some of the, the matters that had been uh, moved forward from previous years, but also entertained new ones, such as uh, Councilmember Alcala's recommendation that we have a farmer's market. Which we all discussed and had a, a good thoughtful uh, presentation and discussion amongst ourselves, uh, so that we can make an informed decision. Uh, I'm not um, you know, the most senior member, but I'm the second most senior member on this council. And Mayor Pretend Ledesma has not only served for several years, I don't know if it was a whole decade on the, the planning commission, but also a decade plus on this council, and. Normally, when you itemize or make, make a recommendation for future item uh, agenda, it, it. I, I, I normally expect that they are a little less policy, um, big policy decisions, maybe um. Some proclamations, resolutions, and stuff that's a little bit less uh, major in scope and require. Not as much substantial analysis when it comes to something as major as the, this particular issue, and I don't want to, um. I want to afford the same amount of respect and consideration as all the other important matters that are brought before us. I just learned about this item a couple of days ago, um, after receiving letters um, and having discussions. Uh, outside of my regular work hours, and would like to, I agree with you, Madam Mayor, that I'd like to entertain further discussion on this item. Um, I'm unfamiliar with the planning commission and their, their decision. Um, I remember that, I had heard that it was much to their surprise as well, that, and they were upset with the disruption of process and voted it down. It wasn't a matter of a meaningful discussion. At that time, due to an incongruent process that was in employ, and I don't want to do a disservice uh, on the merits of the issue in the same fashion. I think we have a, a time that's perfect, uh, where in a couple of months, we are going to have an opportunity to first sit down, excuse me, sit down as the first time. Uh, as a full council, and have an opportunity to reflect and thoughtfully approach. Um, how this might enhance our city. Uh, that's not the time, of course, to talk about it now, but um. This is a process that, the disruption of the process is what I'm concerned most about, and I look forward to a more fruitful discussion with all of us. And I look forward to a more fruitful discussion with all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. We received that, um, email and, um, that information from the city manager, so, um, I.
A few days ago, yes, we did.
I appreciate you repeating it. I, I do want to say that, um, as I've mentioned to the city manager and I'm bringing it back to you, is that, uh, as the city attorney mentioned, this is, um, a request for a future agenda item for discussion. And, um, that's it, it's, it's a request and it can be a process that the city manager and the city attorney, um, can present back to council in a future meeting on how this approach could be made. But this, this is a request that is either we are interested in doing a community workforce training agreement or not. And I, um, and hope would, you know, there would be interest in doing so, whether there, um, be a vote or not for this. Um, I believe you did receive the letters and you heard, um, from members of the community, those that, um, who do even reside and who have benefited, uh, from a community workforce training, um, agreement. Some that are established businesses here in our city, uh, who have asked for this to be approved. Um, but now that, I think everybody's had a chance to speak, if there are no other comments, um, Councilmember Early, did you want to ask or add something else?
Mayor, again, I, I, I just want to emphasize, the, the request for the future item is not, uh, the vote that accompanies that is not necessarily, uh, meant to be, uh, an indication of support or opposition. I just want to be clear about that, that the, the request on this, on this item, the reason we have this on the agenda is the council's agreement to take up the issue. Uh, so I just want to be clear that, that, that for the council members, um, here, um, that the vote, if there is a vote, it, it isn't necessarily affiliated with a position on the item.
Exactly.
We actually can't do that.
Hello, it was just, I, I'll be honest, it was just framed that way.
No, 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 I didn't mean it that way. I meant that a vote would mean we would bring it back for future discussion as an agenda item is all this would be. It is not in support or opposition to the, you know, to the item. Um, but if there is my, in addition to that, I would hope there is support for a community workforce training agreement. That's, that's in addition, that's separate from the request.
City attorney already slapped my hand for making any sort of, I will not be making any statements on that. But I do have a question.
Go ahead.
To the, to our city manager, I, I think what would be helpful also, um, and again, as someone who literally worked as a staff person, just saying like, hey, sometime in the future, can we do this? I think what would be helpful for me, um, Erin, the manager Laurel, um, sorry, um, would be to understand, i- is it going to take you guys a couple of months anyway to do the work involved in this? Because if it is, shouldn't we just discuss it in our retreats? I, I, I'm trying to understand what, what, what we gain by saying, hey, a future agenda versus just saying, yes, please direct the staff to work on this for our, our future, our February retreat.
Right, and, and first of all, um, I am perfectly fine being called Erin by the council.
I want to be as respectful as you are to me.
I actually don't like city manager Laurel. So, yeah, and, and I think that's kind of the, the, the idea behind the recommendation. It, it's acknowledging that this is a major policy topic. Um, it, it has been, uh, for a long time and, and not just in California. And we need to pay it due justice to be able to, to inform staff, the, the city attorney, uh, to do the research that, that you'll need as a, as a policy body, uh, to make an informed and effective decision. Um, that will take some time. We, we are, we are in the middle of the year and we have a, a major workload. We have a lot of things that we're already working on. Um, I can tell you right now that I've already, um, foreshadowed that John Robinson will be the lead staff person on this and Jeff Mitchell will be, uh, leading the legal work on it. They're both, uh, very much involved in, in, uh, many things right now. The strategic planning process, though, we are accustomed to spending time, setting aside time during that, that, uh, period of, we actually start with the executive team, um, doing its own sort of, uh, you know, work to, um, get ready for that retreat. And that, that happens in November and December. And, uh, then we have the holiday break and we come back. We're pretty much, at that point, we're writing everything for the, the council strategic planning retreat. The other benefit of the retreat, it, it allows us to schedule, um, special time, you know, allocated time for a topic that we know is going to take more than just the regular time we allot to a council meeting. So that's really why I'm recommending that we, we use the timing in front of us, um, to, uh, have it go through the council process versus if you ask me to, I'll just be blunt, if you ask me to show up to a future council meeting, I can't tell you right now when that meeting would be. Uh, and to your point, it, it might, it may likely not be until the time we're doing the council retreat. That's only a couple, really, you know, a few months away. It, it, uh, it's, uh, February, but all the information that you'll receive for it, you get long ahead of that. So, uh, so that's, that's really why I'm making the recommendation I made.
So it sounds like it, it's basically equivalent, if I'm understanding this right, except we can talk more in depth in, in February versus having a, 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 a smaller amount of time on our agenda in a meeting sometime in the future, we will, that shall not be named right now?
That, that's generally why, yes, that is generally why we do the retreat process, why we have, um, a strategic plan process in the first place, um, is to deal with these major policy initiatives of a few things that have been mentioned tonight. Um, and in one form or another, those have either, e- even however they started, they ended up as a strategic plan items that were further informed by more staff work. Um, and, and I would characterize this as definitely one of those. Um, it, it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a major undertaking.
If I may, Madam Mayor, it, 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 yeah, I, I, I'm kind of seeing this, there's only three meetings left in December in the year. Am I right, um, Erin?
And I, yeah. Yeah. Here, I know it's time, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and with the holidays, when the, the city, and, and I, I'm just, by way of process, that, that's where these things come out, right? And, and it's, 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 you know, there's, like I said, I've had many things, a few things that I've gone forward, that I brought forward of those things over the years and, and a few things that have failed. Cause it's, it's my colleagues have thought that they've, the, the merits of those, so. Um, but, but it, but it is the time when we are able to kind of distill down, what is it we really want to get done as a, as a team. Right? We're, we're here for the betterment of the city, of the, of the entire community. Um, and I think about what we have left in our remaining three months. Our biggest priority for me coming into this week, when I learned about this too, uh, we were supposed to have a budget meeting. And it's critically important for us. Um, a reminder, we're still in a pandemic. Um, so I, I, I'm not saying no, uh, but like, I don't want to talk about the subject matter. But there's a lot of priorities and this, I, I view this as a major policy issue. Um, that, um, and, uh, that one that deserves the thoughtfulness and time and the community's, uh, awareness of what it is or that would be considered. So, again, I, that's, that's my view, um, if, I'm hearing from my colleagues. Um, the strategic planning, from a timing perspective of prioritization, uh, the city managers made this case, which I would agree with. That sounds, that sounds right. That's when this kind of work gets done, so, um, if my colleagues are there, I'm, I'm there with you.
All right, Mayor Pretend LaDesma, thank you. And, um, and just to, uh, provide clarification on the planning commission, um, there was a commissioner who was absent and then returned. Um, and probably did not hear the whole background of a prior meeting where I did present this and there was, um, consensus and then things changed when it came back for second round of discussion. So I just wanted to add that Councilmember Orozco's, um, historical information about the planning commission update that I provided. Um, but I also want to open it up for public comment, um, at this point on this item. Are there any, Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Maria Guajahaba? Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, it appears that you're trying to put something on an agenda item and the, uh, there's some council members that do not want you to put this, uh, item on a, a future agenda item for your, uh, future retreat. And, uh, because possibly they've considered a, a major policy. But, uh, how can you, uh, discuss it if it's not put on, uh, on the agenda? And so this really is a, a, a workforce training agreement, is a social justice, uh, agreement also, by the way. Just so that you know. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay, I'll bring it back and, uh, we do have a motion on the table and I am interested in knowing, is there any other, is there a second?
This is Dante. I, so I, again, first meeting, um, I, I'm inclined to agree with our city manager. If it's going to take the same amount of time, um, I'm actually saying I want to talk about this. I want to talk about it at a set date. I don't want it at some future agenda that I don't know what it's going to be. I want to direct our staff to prepare what they need to prepare for our retreat. That is actually what I'm saying, not sometime in the future to be named, literally, I want to name it right now. I want to discuss it in February.
In February, that's fine. If you would like to, um, if you would, if Councilmember Alcala would like to amend her motion to make sure that it's included in February, that's, that's fine.
I think it's included in our retreat.
In our retreat in February.
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Mayor, I, I just, my understanding is that we didn't need a.
We don't need a vote, yeah.
Okay, we literally can just direct Erin to do it.
All right.
Go forward, sir.
On the February retreat calendar, I don't want to, you know, see it not on there, uh, because we have.
I would hope that, I would hope our city manager listens to us. Erin, if we direct you right now to, to have staff begin to work on this for our retreat, is there a possibility it won't be on the agenda? Cause I wouldn't be happy.
I, I mentioned earlier, I, I kind of need to see it not aheads, but I feel like this is more powerful, so, so, yeah.
And this is, and this is when Erin says, start calling me city manager Laurel.
Yeah, all right. We're clear, thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I can't be anywhere clearer.
Um, I don't, I don't mean to slow things down, but eh, because there is a motion, my request would be
To withdraw it?
If she will withdraw the motion.
Yes, I will withdraw. With the understanding it's going to be put on our retreat calendar in February, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is, uh, I'll request the motion to adjourn. So moved. I'll second. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend LaDesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, we are now adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a good.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
That's one thing before, I, I'm sorry, I failed to acknowledge this and, and, and along with the welcome, the council member early.
Yes.
But I, uh, I'm just going to say for the record, even though we adjourned already, uh, what a privilege to serve on this council with four women on it. Um, so, uh, seriously, I mean, that's, it's a historic council in that way as well. So I just want to, um, voice that tonight. So thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.
This was great, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.